Okay, could we please start this budget meeting? And start withstanding, to the pleasure of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, a couple of announcements having to do with future meetings. On Monday, January 25th, at 6:00 PM, here in the Matthew Thornton Room, will be the, hopefully, last budget meeting, right? Hopefully. Thursday, January 28th, at 7:00 PM, here in the Matthew Thornton Room, a regular town council meeting. On Thursday, February 11th, 7 o'clock again, another regular council meeting. Special announcement, just a reminder to everyone, Tuesday, February 9th, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, at the Merrimack High School. Repeat, Merrimack High School are the presidential primary elections, and that's at 36 McKelwain Street. Okay. So why don't we just start right away, start with assessing.
Good evening. Lauren Martin sends her regrets for not being here tonight, but due to an emergency, she cannot be present.
But you're gonna do a good job filling in.
I'll try. Assessing budgets is pretty easy, it's a flat-line budget. The only real increase is for the 53rd week of payroll and health insurance.
That's number one, right?
Number 02.
02, thank you. Okay. Yes, Judy?
Thank you, I just had a question about the cars.
Yes.
I assume that they're town-owned vehicles, and how many are there?
There is one town-owned vehicle that is, the assessor has access to, and it's a Ford Focus.
Thank you.
Are there any? Yes, Dan?
It's more for people at home, too. Paul, just tell everybody at home, how many people work in the assessing department?
There are four, there are three full-time staff, and there's one contract assessor who oversees the department. And oversees our valuation and revals. And any people who come into an abatement, she oversees the abatement and process and things of that sort, for technical expertise.
Good question, Dan. Any other questions? Apparently not, so we can move on to communications. Come on down. Chief Doyle.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, and members of the council, and Town Manager Eileen Cabano, and Chief Financial Officer Paul McCally. I want to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to discuss, at least now, the communications budget, and talk with you about some of the small changes that you might see in the communications budget. What we've done is worked very closely, not only with the communications staff, but the Assistant Communications Supervisor, John Spence, Lieutenant LeVek, who now oversees the division with Captain Dudash as the commander of the entire operate, or excuse me, Administrative Support Services Division side. You'll find, as you go through the budget, there are very few changes, with the exception of an additional full-time dispatcher, which is still in the works right now. There's a negotiation going on with the collective bargaining unit right now to discuss the opportunity, I look at it as an opportunity, to bring somebody onboard in a full-time capacity, and remove two of the part-time positions right now that are currently unfilled. That also, one minor change that you'll see in the communications budget, there have been no money's budget for any renovations or upgrades. The one renovation project that we had last year for our communications division renovation went through very well. It is now a very professional-looking and professionally-run division because of the efficiency, efficiencies we realized, just through the design and the way the communications really flow through there now because of the way it's been designed, and some of the improvements we've been able to take advantage of through that renovation. We also have, then there may be a couple of questions on moving forward on our radio upgrade, that we talked, I think, at length about probably a year and a half ago, and have started already moving toward making some improvements on the overhaul of the entire system. What we've done this year is include and have already installed a microwave system that lends its communication from our base station here at the police station to the Hutchinson Road water tower repeater, and that improvement has made quite a bit of difference, and that's something that we are expecting to continually improve upon during the entire overhaul process, which will take place over the next two years. We have money put aside in the Capital Reserve Fund to make sure that that continues to move forward on its plan. Right now, the communications budget, because of that one dispatcher increase, is looking at roughly about a 9% increase over last year's dollar-wise, and certainly are available for any questions that any members of the council may have.
Eileen?
I just wanted to clarify this a little bit, because what the chief is talking about as far as the dispatchers actually cross, across two budgets, so I'd like to talk about them together. Probably two months ago or so, the animal control officer became a police officer, leaving that position vacant. So, the police chief came over to my office, and we sat down, as we usually do when something like this happens, and we'd say, what do we want to do? We have an opportunity here. What, what, what are you lacking, and what do you, what may be a little bit more than you need? So we always talk, you've got a part, a full-time person, do you still need the full-time person?
Right.
So, I know Sharon, our Personnel Director, has been having a very difficult time, and the chief have been having a very difficult time trying to keep dispatchers, particularly part-time dispatchers. And so, we sat down and talked, and we said, now what's more, what is more important to you? Would you rather have a position, full-time, in the dispatcher's office, and have a part-time animal control officer? How would that work for you? And the chief jumped right on that, and said, absolutely, we positively must have a full-time dispatcher, because, as I said, it's almost impossible. We've gone through many, many dispatchers over the past two or three years, and once you get them trained, then they leave. And we've, we've, especially the part-time, as I said, positions. So, we just thought that this was a really, it's, it's a pretty much a wash in terms of costs back and forth between the budgets. One now doesn't get health insurance, the other one does. So, it's, it's, but it has created a very, I'm really pleased with that particular efficiency, because it just, it gives us something that we really need for something that we don't necessarily need to be full-time.
Thank you. Anything else regarding this budget? Finley?
Want me to wait until they're done?
Oh. Do you want to present anything else?
Uh, no.
Major issues?
We're pretty much all set unless it was anything on this.
Okay, go ahead, Finley.
I'm gonna go over to the other side. On the dog officer, or animal control, I guess, what, what would their, what would their routine be, I guess? What, when are they, I'll tell, I had a dog years ago, when I was a child, it escaped all the time, was arrested regularly. But oftentimes, it would be a patrol officer, or some, one of the guys, you know, one of those on the road. So I didn't know what they might, what a specific animal control officer might do that a patrolman might not do.
Well, a patrolman would do all of that if the animal control officer weren't present, which occasionally happens, especially on the weekends, which would pick up the dogs that are strays, pick up dogs that may be injured, that we'd have a difficult time locating their owners. They handle a number of wildlife calls, I think, the numbers that I put together for Councilor Boyd would suggest that we're roughly at about 45 calls for service per month for our animal control officer. And that's specific to just animal control officer calls. Now, it's not to say that they stand around and wait for calls to come in, we have a lot of things to do in the station that they do other than that, but for the most part, that individual's responsibility is focused specifically on handling the calls for service relative to domestic and wildlife calls, so it could be any number of things.
And then also, if you don't mind, would, would it be, do they have a fixed schedule, or is it a situation where you call up and say, hey, we have a raccoon who's terrorizing everybody?
And that's, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's one of the challenges that we'd have, looked at relative to the calls for service. The calls for service and the animal control officer, to the first part of your question, works a Monday-through-Friday schedule right now. And we've actually bounced it around a little bit to find out where we can get our biggest bang for the buck. Does that mean working on Tuesday through Saturday? At one point, a few years ago, we even had a part-time animal control officer that worked on the weekends. When we did away with that position, we did an analysis, took a look at where those calls for service were falling, and it was generally between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM during the course of the day, Monday through Friday. And it wasn't a lot more than what was happening over the weekends, but it was enough to show that we needed that person during the course of the week as opposed to over the weekends. So what we felt was the appropriate thing to do was bring that person on a full-time capacity from 8:00 until 4:00, and then any other overflow, the officers that are on duty would handle the calls for service, file a report, and make sure that those reports are followed up after hours, not after hours, but during normal course of business hours for our animal control officer, in an after-hours capacity. So even if they came in on the weekend, those forward, those calls for service, we put forward to him or her on that Monday, coming back to work.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
First of all, Bill, and then Dan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A question for Eileen and Paul. When I look at page 33, under Communications, for wages part-time, 01 hyphen 05, 8107. In the list of questions, Communications, page 33, wages part-time. Okay. In the, in the questions that the chief was kind enough to provide for me and the council, I had asked the question, how many part-time dispatchers are employed? And he said that there are three. There are two that are paid at a rate of $16.91, and a more seasoned dispatcher is at a pay rate of $18.06. When I look at the budget, I see the $16.91, but I don't see a line item for the $18.06. And I do see that there was a item in there for $19.46 that was zeroed out. So, can you help me find that particular line item? Did I misread it?
Nope. You read it right, what the chief said. However, there's 1,000 hours, and those are 1,000 on-call hours. If they need somebody to come in, they call them up to come in. So it's an average of $16.91, and we budget for six, 1,000 hours at $16.91. If they use this gentleman who's making, or lady who's making 18 and change, they just have less on-call hours to deal with. Their on-call budget is $16,910 for their on-call dispatch. That's supplement, that means if they have a dispatcher, chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they have a dispatcher who calls out sick, and they can't fill it with another dispatcher, they'll pick up the phone on their own call and say, we need you tonight, come on in. That person will come in and fill that shift. And that's how they use their on-call dispatchers. We do not have any permanent part-time positions, and those are the two positions that we're eliminating out of the budget, were permanent part-time of 20 hours a week.
So this is per diem, basically?
This is basically a per diem.
Yes.
For the, for the dispatchers. So, we use the number $16.91 as an average. Does that answer your question?
It answers my question. I'm trying to decide whether, whether I like it or not, to be honest with you, because if you have an on-call dispatcher, to me, there should be a line item in the budget that delineates a wage for, for an on-call dispatcher, as opposed to commingling it under
With part-time.
Under one part-time, for transparency purposes, because...
I can change that title to on-call dispatchers. Those are the on-call dispatchers, right there.
Would that...
That's fine, I mean, if...
Clarify it for you.
It would, I mean, I don't want to beat a dead horse, I just...
No, but if it's, you wouldn't have an issue with that, would you?
No, not at all.
It's just the titling of it.
Yeah. And when we talk about on-call, these are individuals who also may be scheduled as well. You follow what I'm saying? In case we have a vacancy next week because somebody needed the day off or took a vacation, we would reach into our part-time dispatcher allotment.
It's still on-call.
And give them a call and say, can you come in and work on Tuesday night? For example, we need a shift to cover it, no problem. That's where that would come out of.
Yeah, part-time does sort of imply that it's a scheduled...
To me, part-time means the person's coming in before 8:00, they're scheduled.
Right.
That's how I, that's how I interpret that.
Right. So I think that could be easily remedied with the re-titling. Dan?
Okay. The, I was startled, well, startled's probably not the right word. I was shocked that the 45 calls a month, that's little over two calls a day. Now, mind you, I understand that the ACO has other, other issues that they're tasked with. I had actually tried to figure out, from looking at Bedford and Hudson, only because I know that they have full-time ACOs, and I was not able to get that particular data. Did you happen to, and I should have asked this question, and I didn't, and I apologize if I'm putting you on the spot, but did you happen to look at any other communities, the data regarding, I mean, I understand you can't really compare communities, but to me, I was wondering if there was any additional data regarding other communities regarding...
That's a fair question, and I did not, but I can certainly dig a little bit deeper, and I can get that information for you.
Okay.
I can tell you that we did our own analysis, and outside of the normal calls for service that would be normally attributed to an animal control officer, the bear complaints, cruelty to animals, wildlife nuisance, because the dogs are barking vicious, because the dogs are biting, dog menacing, dogs running at large, our animal control officer has also assisted us at homicide scenes, delivered paperwork, he does a lot of work relative to the civil forfeitures that we put out, which, he works very closely with Diane Trippett at the Town Clerk's Office. He assists with house checks when we need to have him assist with house checks, he assists at ambulance calls, other police calls, at structure fires if there are traffic concerns, because we do have him cross-trained as a traffic officer as well. So there are a number of other things where he fills in and helps out, which is great to have, frankly. It's really a bonus to have that individual as, as, as cross-trained as he or she could be, and to put them to use when they're not handling the calls for service that would normally be attributed to an animal control officer's position.
I mean, all the patrolmen, I think, are generally really good about picking up stray dogs and stray cats, as Lieutenant LeVek can attest to, just was put into protective custody and thrown in the back of his cruiser a couple, a couple of years ago, which I thought was funny. Sorry, I was just trying to crack a joke, failed miserably, thank you. The, sorry, sorry. The, the last question...
Go ahead.
Excuse me, the last question, focusing back on, on the relationship with the Animal Rescue League in Bedford, do we see anything else expanding into, like, like Nash or with the, the shelter up in Manchester to provide additional, in case, in case you can't get an animal into the, the ARL in Bedford, you know, is, is that something worth exploring? Are we comfortable with the relationship with the ARL in Bedford, that if we had to drop a stray off, that's, we could get that animal in there?
Yeah, fair question. We have a very good relationship with the Animal Rescue League. The folks up there are amazing folks. They do a lot of good work because they have the right people doing the work that they need to do up there. And when they approached us in, back in 2007, and we started chatting with them about closing the, what at the time was the pound-down at the wastewater treatment facility because of the litany issues we had with that, they welcomed us with open arms, and frankly, for short money, for $500 a year, they take in all of our strays, they do their email blast and their Facebook, social media blast relative to the Granite State Missing Dog Alliance, or whatever it is that they have out there, and there's plenty of push. So when we have an incident where we have taken in the dog or stray, they're right on the ball, and they, and they have a drop-off system in place, so after hours, they're even cared for, and they're not left abandoned in some pen until the morning, that kind of thing. I mean, it's really a great relationship we have with them.
I'm only asking these questions because I think there's, in terms of the types of services that Merrimack, you know, being the eighth-largest community in New Hampshire, I think there's kind of an expectation that the community of our size and stature has a full-time animal control officer, you know, as you see in, in other communities. So, I think part of the reason why I'm asking these questions, I want the community to know that you've thought about this, is kind of like how you and Eileen alluded to, that there's better value to having a, somebody answering the calls and being able to have a policeman respond to whatever versus, you know, an animal control officer, where if they're only responding to two, two incidents a day, and we're tasking that individual with other duties in addition to being an animal control officer, that lessening, moving that from a full-time to a part-time role, actually, it's going, I would think, is going to increase the ACO, an ACO's presence in the community, because their hours are going to be more limited, so therefore, the focus is going to be more on, on working with owners regarding that particular piece, as opposed to having somebody that's around full-time, and there's, you know, the value's not there because of the infrequency of those particular calls.
Yeah, and I think, I think we'll find in short order, if we move in that direction, we're going to find in very short order that we'll be able to put that person, that part-time individual, right where they need to be, to be able to handle that, that concentration of calls for service, specific to, and attributed to, the animal control piece, and the animal control piece alone. I mean, if that's what we're doing, trying to do, we could certainly, we have the data to be able to drive us in that direction, so I think that's not going to be a problem. We should be able to do it, and do it efficiently, and I don't think the folks in town are going to see any blip in the level of quality of service that they have currently become to realize and expect.
I mean, the 45 calls a month, that just, I was really kind of surprised, how large we are, 45 calls, that was, you know, to me, that was an interesting number, so. Thank you, I appreciate it, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dan?
I just wanted to quickly take the opposite view, of course. 45 calls may sound like a lot, but you, you, you took upon some of our crazy calls. I saw a deer, I saw a bear, bear's gone, but that call's registered as an animal call. So, a dog being lost, or a cat in the tree, you're more of a homeowner pet thing, but we also get the calls for a rooster, you're going to get a calls, a bunch of crazy calls, that I saw a fisher cat. So put in perspective what the 45 calls really means, and just wanted that for the record, that 45 just doesn't mean danger on every, on every, on every call.
But you're making my point. I'm saying 45, to me, is, is a small amount of numbers, so if you take, put that, if you subtract that number by a third, let's just say, then the number just dwindles down even more.
And then my second one was, just on the very first, the supervisor, why is he called an Assistant Communications Supervisor? Why not, isn't he just the, the communications supervisor, or manager, or...
Yeah, when that person was, I said that person, but that one position was adopted into the contract at the time that the collective bargaining unit...
It's a contract thing.
Yes.
Never mind. Answer the question.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Tom?
Just really quick, on the Capital, on the Capital Reserve Fund number, 8510. We're budgeted for $146K this year, the department asked for $175K, and the town manager went up to $182K. Can you remind me what...
That is the three-year plan to get up for that radio upgrade that they need with the microwave and other comlog issues that they have.
But the department didn't ask for it? I don't understand.
They submit their budget, and then Paul and myself and the department heads will sit down and talk about it, and normally, they'll, if something like this happens, they'll agree to it, and we'll change their department, their department column, because we're agreeing that, you know, after, we, you know, we look at the numbers for a three-year period, and we probably should have changed that number, because we're not disputing anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone here? Apparently not, so we can move on to place number four. Well, you got out of that easy, didn't you, huh? Quick.
He's learning well.
Shifting of the colors.
Oh, sorry.
I'll let you introduce.
You may be new, but you're knowledgeable.
And as was the case with the communications budget, we began the process back in late summer of 2015, soliciting input from our staff and from other members of the department, including our patrolmen and our records folks, worked closely with them to prepare the budget that really was not only responsible, but also fit the needs of all of our citizens, to provide the level and quality of service that not only they should expect, but they really deserve. So with the direction of our town manager and our finance officer, Eileen and Paul, we've been able to, I think, do just that. Our budget, as proposed, deviates just a little bit from last year's with only a few minor, minor changes, including a conversion of a full-time animal control officer to a part-timer, which we spoke a little bit about now, and that this budget represents, I don't think, quite a 1% increase over last year's.
Point eight-nine.
Point eight-nine, thank you very much. So we certainly have some folks here that can answer any or all of your questions that you might have relative to, the one thing that might jump out at you was the maintenance building line, which is... 8321, maintenance building. And the money that's budgeted in there, it's not for major renovations or anything like that, even though it looks pretty large. We started chatting with our finance officer about painting inside the building, the building hasn't been painted since it was built, it's been painted sporadically, but not completely, so we're talking about almost 20 years. I say built, excuse me. Renovated from the medical facilities that it once was. And we're also realizing that there's some facade work that needs to be done on the exterior of the building that's starting to chip away. It's got that brick face that's starting to buckle and crack along the very base of the building, all the way actually around the building. So what we need to do is talk a little bit more with Paul and get some folks in to find out if that's something that we can fix within the parameters of the budget, and that's why you see that number right there right now.
Eileen and Paul, anything?
Paul was just bringing to my attention that since this budget was originally brought forward, it was, what Paul does is he takes each budget, and he, he takes every single individual and puts their salary in the budget, including if they have a step or any of those kinds of things. Since then, since the budget has been prepared, there have been some significant changes to the staffing, some people retiring, newer people coming in, people moving up, and that kind of thing. So there's, there is...
Fifty.
About $50,000 worth of cuts that could be made to the salary, not, we can give you the specifics, it's going to be salary, it's going to be retirement, workers comp, and that kind of thing, and we can give you those specifics when you talk about it on, on Monday night, but we just wanted to, to give you kind of a heads-up that, that there's some excess in there since the budget was originally drafted.
That's just, just rearranging...
Yeah.
The staffing from masters to patrolmen, and so it's not cutting anything, it's just rearranging.
Right. Okay. I'm open to the questions, anybody on this side? Judy?
Thank you. Hi, Chief. I have, I'll have a similar question for the fire department, too. I, I'm trying to understand how shift overtime works relative to just having an additional person on staff, and I understand that sometimes we can't plan for what the shift overtime is needed, but if you could just explain to me how that works and why we budget for the overtime instead of actually adding an additional person, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Well, there are a couple of challenges with the, the way the shifts work. We work on a four-and-two schedule, which means our officers work four days on and two days off, all except our lieutenants, our staff officers, the sergeants and the patrolmen who actually cover the shifts in patrol work a four-and-two, our detectives work a five-day workweek. That promotes a little bit of a challenge, because it's not easy just to throw another officer into the mix to cover a shift, because notwithstanding the shifts that that individual would cover, you're still on those days off going to have a cycle through where shifts necessarily won't be covered. What we've done to almost mitigate that is gone, and this we did a few years ago, is gone to a minimum-maximum staffing concept, meaning that we have a minimum number of officers that we all feel collectively the shift can work with, whether it's late nights, overnights from 11:00 to 7:00, or it's our B-shift, or it's our day shift. And what we've done with the addition of the two officers that we have coming onboard, and going through the process of recruiting right now, is we're going to take those officers and put them where a majority of our calls for service are. Now, we understand that even though they'll be working a four-and-two, we're going to offset them, so they don't share the same day off. So we'll have that coverage, that breadth of coverage across the spectrum of that shift concentration of calls for service. What happens, though, because we have a number of officers that have a number of years of service on, they have accrued a lot of time, that they have an ability and opportunity to take off. So when they are put in for the shift, we take a look at the coverage, we find out if it's something that we can get away with. I say get away with, because we have a number of extra manpower on, because they haven't dipped below that minimum staffing. And if so, we're all set, we don't have to cover the shift. so, we're all set. We don't have to cover the shift. There are occasions, and it does occur periodically, that we have to cover those shifts with overtime because we don't want it to drop below a sector officer in each sector, a supervisor working the shift, so that we can make sure that, that level and quality of service that the folks in-town need are comfortable with it and we feel safe rendering it. So what we need to do is just kind of continually look at what that overtime piece is. We're hopeful that, we are hopeful. And I think only time will tell. When those new officers are cycled into the system, probably a year from now, when they're going to be on their own, God willing, that we'll be able to take a look at that overtime piece and see if it's actually working for us the way we want it to work. Again, it's a challenge with the schedule as well as the time-off piece that everybody is able to take advantage of, where we're kind of stuck between that, do we make that move to get another officer? Is it going to make that much of a difference? So we really rely on Paul to kind of give us the crunch and the numbers on that. Or do we stick with the overtime that we're working with right now and then look down the road a year from now if it's still working, whether we need to continue on that same vein with the number of overtime hours that we have allotted, and whether that coverage system still works, whether we need to even adjust our minimum manpower staffing concept either. It's a, one of those kind of dynamic things. You continually look at it and you have to reassess. It's not a magic number where you've met so many hours of coverage in the shift that you can automatically say, okay, you know what, this equals one man per shift or per squad or just even the entire division that's going to mitigate the number of hours. It's not that simple. Does that answer your question?
It does. It makes sense. And then the other thing that you added was the guarantee that annually you crunched the numbers about, is it financially worth it to continue taking the scheduling into consideration to pay this much overtime or should we add another officer?
We're reminded regularly by our chief financial officer that that's a responsibility-
And the numbers are substantial. The overtime numbers are substantial. So I, and, and I, it's, it's a number that I think when you, we come around to voting and elections and budget approval that people, constituents ask about, too. So I think it's a good, good to understand how you arrived at that. Thank you.
And the one thing about overtime, too, is if you get beyond the, what you need as a minimal, the overtime gives you some flexibility, you know, when you need it because that variability in scheduling vacations, sick, whatever, that a position doesn't give you.
Right.
I mean, and I'm not negating the need for the positions, but there's always going to be some need for overtime. It's just the nature of the beast. Yes, Eileen?
What makes it really difficult for both departments that when you sit down and really think about it, about the concept of, for instance, having something like a floater rather than to have somebody that is, you know, just filling it in with overtime, we're talking about three hundred and sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day. So it's a different, it's a completely different thing. So often, we go to the extent of actually figuring out how much vacation time everyone has accrued every year, how much in, on an average they use, how much sick time they have, how much do they use on an, over a five-year period of time, and how much training is, is needed and, and that kind of thing. And then you have, this year, we've had quite a few people out for long periods of time for various workers' comp things and all that kind of stuff. So it is looked at very carefully every time. It's not just a number that is thrown together. It's, it's based on, it's based on actual information. How many holidays are there? How many vacation days, that kind of thing. Okay.
I just had a couple of other quick questions. Thank you. Under travel and meetings, eighty-three-hundred, I was just curious, what, what are, what are the meetings? What does that constitute, the money in the budget for that?
On travel and meetings?
Yeah, page thirty-one. Eighty-three-hundred.
Well, that could be any number of meetings relative to chiefs of police meeting that may require a stayover, for example. Every year, and I haven't gone to it this year, but every year we have a chiefs meeting in the fall and in the summer. And along with the chiefs meeting, not only is there a lot of golf, which I don't play, but there's a lot of in-service training that you take particular part in and that kind of thing. It would be for that. It would be for our FBI National Academy associates meetings. There's a re-trainer that they go to, or that we would go to every year. That would be coming out of that. Meetings that we would have at the station, there might be staff meetings. We might be hosting another meeting for another department that would come in for training, that kind of thing. I don't think, I'd have to double-check, but I'm not so sure that we've even come to that twenty-five-hundred dollar number regularly.
Okay.
No. And also that's, if they, for instance, if, if Gunny has to go and get something, that's part of it, too, that travel associated with Gunny if he's going overnight to a, to a seminar. That's where that would come in.
And we do, and-
Well, they go to Boston, but they, you know, that's just-
And that's the case, and that's true, too. When we have officers that will travel out of state, they'll drive and not fly or otherwise. They'll drive and that will come out of that line for the travel piece, for any overnight accommodations that they'd have to take advantage of because they're on a two- or three-day training thing.
Okay. Thank you. You answered my building maintenance question already. And-
Can I piggyback a question related to what you were asking?
That's fine with me.
Oh, is it, is it brass or rank and file, too, when, when that, under that meeting category? Is it the whole, the whole force? Doesn't matter?
Yeah, it's everybody. We've sent a number of our officers to use a force training. And I, I know specifically, we did the simulations down in Connecticut. We sent a few of the officers down there and that was a three-dayer. So that's where it would come from.
Okay. And then I just had a question on page thirty-two under vehicles, eighty-five-zero-three. There was a difference between the proposed budget and the town manager's budget. Is that something that you got together and discussed and agreed on or was there?
We, we discussed it. I think the chief was looking for four vehicles. Actually, there was, there was two things the chief was looking for. He was looking for a new off-road vehicle.
We were.
And, and another, another, when he brought the budget forward with the police fit-ups because we're changing, we changed over the cruisers and he brought, we were able to get the police fit-ups for those new cruisers at a cheaper rate. So we sit down and talk about it. It wasn't just a slash and cut. He was bringing four, three vehicles forward. They were a little bit on the high side. We saw the new state contract bid. Saw what that was after this came out. We talked about it and we reduced it.
Okay. So this dollar amount would still get you the three vehicles?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's it for me. Thank you.
I'm Bill Van Finley.
I'm just going to do the Dandwire piggyback thing.
Go right ahead.
Oh. Piggyback.
With that number, they have, on the spreadsheet, you have, reflects the capital reserve fund for police vehicles increased by twenty thousand dollars. That message carries over in the next box from the department, which was reduced down to the one hundred and eleven thousand. It has the same comment. Is it still true in that number as well?
Paul's checking, I think, right?
Actually, that, that comment should have been reduced to, to increase by five. It's only five thousand dollars difference between the one oh-six and the one eleven. We got a very favorable state contract. It was almost a negligible increase. It was a hundred dollars per car increase. So when we were looking at, we were looking, usually they're on three thousand dollars a car. So that would have been nine plus the fit-up cost. Would have been the twenty. It's only five now. So that comment could get changed. So that will be changed. Okay. Good catch.
That's why I like this. To get the secret messages you don't get. Sorry.
Go right ahead.
It's, I do, but I'll wait for Bill then.
Bill?
Just waiting to find out when they're going to encrypt them.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, a couple of questions. I know the prosecutor has left the community and I know that we are funding the position. Have you made advertisements to fill the opening? Any applications? Just-
She starts Monday.
Wonderful.
We're very excited. She comes with a pretty impressive pedigree. She worked at the county attorney's office in Rockingham County for a number of years. She's the current prosecutor at, oh, well, it was up until just this week over in Deerfield. And she came very highly recommended and regarded. So we have very high hopes for her to be able to fill that position and do so seamlessly. Captain Dudash has been filling in, God bless him, for the better part of the last month and a half, taking care of our prosecutorial duties. And he's been doing a great job trying to stay ahead of the flow. But she's very excited. We've had a nice, long conversation with her. She's very excited about coming in and I think she's going to be a turnkey operation.
Great. To dovetail off, off of that and what Captain Dudash has been doing, can you, when you, when we did, when did we do the reorg? Was it tw- twenty thirteen that we, you reorganized?
Two thousand and twelve.
Two thousand and twelve. Okay. So it's, it's been, we're coming into the fourth year. I was wondering if you could elaborate a little bit about the value of the prosecutor in our community in terms of what obviously the former occupant used to do and how you envision the prosecutor helping out our community moving forward?
Do you want to chat a little bit about that? I'll give it to Captain Dudash, who really oversees that division.
Being a person, I know that Captain Albert and the chief, all prosecutor, including with Denise Roy, one thing we don't have is really that real expertise to really dig into like motion and arguing motions. It's just, it's something to be said for somebody who has a law degree and to answer a seventeen-page motion, which I had to do like two weeks ago. And when you get hit with it and you're spending hours and hours trying to answer it, it just seems to come natural to, to these prosecutors. And this girl, whose name is Lisa Rick, she's from Bedford, New Hampshire, is somebody who's going to be very impressive. I think you guys are going to be very, very unhappy when you meet her. She has, as the chief says, has a great resume from working with the county attorney's office of Rockingham County. She did defense work and also prosecution work. So this is our second prosecutor. This is probably the first person that we have the, the all-around picture, really, somebody who has everything that can offer to, to do this job. So when it comes down to it, when to make that field level in the, in the courtroom, that's really the real playing field, that's really, that's really game day, you need an attorney to do the job.
No, it's, it's, it's the practical experience of knowing what motions to file, what forms to file, what rules to be looking at. You know, I know that there was a case recently involving the Concord Police Department where they, they looked at one particular law, but they didn't, they neglected to look at the, neglected to look at the footnote. And it resulted in, in I believe, a civil, a civil lawsuit as a consequence. So I think, I agree with you that it's important to have somebody not just qualified and obviously sounds their experience, but knows how to make their way around a courtroom and know when to go after a certain case and know when to cut bait and try and, you know, settle, settle a particular crime.
Especially, you know, with her coming from the county attorney's office, it's somebody who dealt with many, you know, really felonies. So-
Right.
It's going to be an expertise that's going to be really welcomed with us.
Okay. Thank you. Couple more questions, Ben. Chief, with the medicinal cannabis facility coming to Merrimack and with the state now allowing naloxolone slash Narcan to be purchased, OTC at, at the pharmacy, is there going to be any increased training provided to the police officers regarding, I hate to use the term exposure, but, you know, working, you know, from, from, not just from an enforcement standpoint, but also from an, you know, an administration standpoint, so it relates to the, Narcan one thing, but I know the, the cannabis piece, you know, would, would people, you know, somebody goes there, they walk out with their prescription, they then go to Market Basket and lo and behold, that prescription fell out of their, fell out of their car. What, what do they do? I mean, you can't go back and get a prescription because they're going, I know they're probably going to treat it like a narcotic, so.
Great question. There are a boatload of rules through human, health and human services that we're, I'm starting to collect now that I get. I'm on that email tree from them. So relative to officers and when they encounter an individual who has a, a card, I don't call it a prescription card, but a card to be able to obtain-
HHS, yeah.
-therapeutic marijuana. And what we need to be able to do to verify that information, there are hotline numbers we can call up to the state that will be in place by the time this rolls around, that we can contact to verify that they're in the system. We can contact and get specific information about who they are. There are some limitations relative to the health information that would be available to a healthcare provider that wouldn't be available to us. But there's going to be a, there's going to be a learning curve with us because it's going to be right here in our backyard regarding what our officers have to do in the event that they encounter individuals who have therapeutic marijuana, medicinal marijuana, and how much they can have. And while if it's not for them, but they have a caretaker that's actually going to the location to pick it up, are they able to? And if so, how much can they carry and for how long and for what distance? So there are some very strict guidelines and it's not going to be anything that we're going to be able to absorb overnight. And we're going to have to really kind of dive into it and, and go through some specific training. The other thing that we're going to be doing is we're going to be taking a field trip, some members of the staff and some members of our criminal investigation bureau are going to take a field trip down to Connecticut-
Connecticut.
Where they actually have, the same company have an operation set up shop. We're going to chat with their police department, their police chief, find out what if any of the issues are that they have, that they've encountered. So we can make sure we're trying to stay ahead of the curve when it comes to what our officers need to be aware of when they open their doors for business in the fall.
Is there any concern about fake ID therapeutic cannabis cards?
Oh, I, I'm sure there's always going to be that concern. But my understanding is, is that not only do you have to show the card, that by the time you get to the point where you're entering the business down there and-
They should be in the system by then.
They're going to be in the system and the system verifies who they are. So if they've got a fake ID card, they're going to have, there's going to be a corroboration mechanism in place.
That was part of the-
Yes.
-presentation, that you're right. There's two levels or three levels of security. One was getting in the door with a card. You couldn't get into the second until after they had verified-
Right.
-that it's one active, accurate, da-da-da. So.
And they've been, I, I got to tell you, they've been very much upfront when it comes time to answering the questions. I know when they were going through the conditional use phase to, or in front of the planning board, I had a number of questions that I wanted to have answered relative to the security plan that they presented. And almost immediately they came back with pretty valid answers to my questions and, and they really cleared up the questions that I had relative to the security plan about transportation, holding there at the store and where it's going to be located, the alarm systems, all of that other good stuff. But that's not to say that we're, we're going to have a few bumps in the road or we won't have a few bumps in the road, because we will. We certainly will. And we, we just want to try to mitigate it as much as possible.
Right.
So our officers aren't caught without the information that they need. And we certainly aren't inconvenienced, folks who are legitimately there to do the things that they need to do to get the, the therapy that they need.
I mean, I think one of the things that the community can take comfort in is, I, I think from some of the conversations that we've had on other issues like parking enforcement over at the premium outlets, that there's a constant discussion of, of, you know, the logistical, the strategic planning piece. And I know that people, you know, as it relates to this, they can take some comfort that you're thinking about this now, that you're going to have plans in place and that you're constantly refining plans when, when challenges arise so that, you know, we're, we're maintaining, you know, a more than adequate level of safety in our community as it relates to this. Because, you know, this, this caused a lot of concern for, for a lot of people.
I just want a question. We just try to isolate and focus on the budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last question I have on page thirty-two, under other operating expenses. You've, you've allocated five grand for, for Gunny. And I know that the K-nine program has been, has been self-sustaining. And I also know that we've, you know, we've approved the purchase of a, of a new K-nine vehicle for Gunny. So is, is this line item the kind of a beginning of trying to figure out, are, are we going to start including the K-nine program into our bottom budgetary line? Is there still going to be the, the community involvement with, with some of the fundraising that's been done? I also know, you know, Gunny's, Gunny's getting up there. So we're, we're looking at potentially training a new officer and a new dog. So I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about that?
Oh, yeah, please.
We have the gross budget. So even though we have donations for Gunny that come in, this is for like his medical insurance.
Right.
And some vet bills if they come in and things of that sort. So by gross appropriating, this money is set aside and there's an offsetting revenue for those five thousand dollars also. So this is for some of his expenses, his dog food, things of that sort.
Okay.
But just to piggyback on that real quick, Captain Albert will chat here real, real fast on where our plan is when we're talking about Gunny's retirement, which is probably a couple of years down the road. And the answer to your question is yes and yes. This money budgeted for those purposes that Paul McCally just talked a little bit about. And we still have an ongoing fundraising component as well to augment it as well. So Captain, did you want to talk a little bit about?
Sure. Basically, I've sat down with Sergeant Walters and we're kind of-
Basically, I've sat down with Sergeant Walters, and we're kind of mapping out where we're gonna be going. Gunny's probably career is gonna be done in about twelve to eighteen months, maybe twenty-four months. He's in good health and everything, but it's just the age of the dog, and Greg would be a better person to explain that part of it, but we're already looking at a couple of sources where we would purchase the dog from, gather a couple of prices or quotes, at least three, and then it's a matter of training, training a new officer, and then, you know, once we've got the dog, it goes to the academy with the officer and so forth, and that was about a thirteen-week academy in Boston. So, we're kind of figuring out the prices, the K-9 unit would stay the same, the vehicle, the equipment, other than depending on the size of the new dog, we might have to purchase some new equipment, like harnesses and things like that.
But that's not in this budget, that would be in the next...
No, the future. Captain Albert, thank you. Chief, thank you.
Finley, did you have a question?
Yeah. We have K-9 medical insurance?
Yes.
How much, I'm just curious, how much does that cost?
What was it, Pete, about twelve, twelve hundred?
Yeah, yeah, we're down two hundred.
Twelve hundred, a year. A year.
I was gonna say, it'd be worth it.
It's well...
No Obamacare for dogs.
You're really on, you're really on, you're really on dog this...
Let them go out on the exchange next time. So, all right. My dogs, they'd be happy to be one of the beady dogs. So, I had two questions, actually. One, on the academy, if we bring somebody in, we send them to the academy, do we, does the state pay for that through their fines, or do we pay for that?
You're talking about...
When we send a new recruit off to the police academy.
He's compensated by the town of Merrimack.
No, no, the cost of the academy.
The actual cost of the academy is actually funded, well, interesting that you brought that up, because there was a lot of chatter amongst the legislature just recently about how the academy's gonna be continually funded. For the longest period of time, it was funded through penalty assessments, that little piece that goes on the end of the fine. If you've got a fine of sixty dollars, that twelve dollars that went on, it would make it seventy-two dollar fine, that was also always called a penalty assessment. So, when you went to court, whether it was for a traffic offense, or a criminal offense, or otherwise, there's always a penalty assessment being assessed on the original fine. That's funded, the training at the police academy, paid for them to have their meals, it paid for them to have the guy clean up after them, vacuum, and the custodial, and the maintenance of the building, the training, the staff, all of that. So, what they realized over the last few years, to make a long story short, is that penalty assessment piece not only had been dwindling away, but some money had been earmarked for other expenditures. I'm not surprised, but that's what happens. So, they ran into a funding crunch just recently relative to where they're gonna get the money for it. I have been told that they have found an appropriation to have that academy funded the way it has always been funded. I don't believe it's all through penalty assessments anymore, though. I'm not sure where it's coming from. But to answer your question, it had always been through penalty assessments before then.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have is, we, our officers work an average of thirty-three, thirty-seven and a third hours a week.
Right.
Does our overtime paying out start at that, or does it start at forty hours?
It starts at, per their contract, they get paid any hours in excess of the eight that they're scheduled during the course of the day. So, if they're on what we call a short week, because of the, out of six weeks, they'll work four weeks that are short weeks, there are thirty-two hour work week, and then they'll work another two weeks, do I have it backwards? Two weeks, that are forty hours, and averages out to thirty-seven and a half. Regardless of what hours they work in a day, whether it's a short week or a regular week, if they work more than their eight-hour scheduled shift, that's when the overtime kicks in.
Okay, let's, let's say they have the, of the two weeks that are four days, thirty-two hours, and then they're called in to work, 'cause somebody's not in, or does that overtime kick in when they get to the forty-hour mark?
Nope, it kicks in right then there at the thirty-two hour mark.
Okay, so in essence, we're paying overtime for over thirty-seven and a third hours?
Yes.
Okay.
Eight hours in a day, their eight-hour shift.
Yeah, but there's two weeks out of the six-week cycle that they only work four days, so that would be thirty-two hours, so if they worked a fifth day filling in for someone, overtime would be for that eight-hour period.
Because they're considered to have worked forty hours, even though they were only working on a short week, and that's why it'll kick in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone over here? Tom?
Yeah, I wanna go back to the building maintenance and just understand what you said there, that there's interior painting, you have forty-five thousand in there, there was eighty thousand requested by the department. You're talking about painting and siding work? There was siding work or problems with that building years ago?
There was.
Where the brick was falling away from the building? Is there any relationship, or...
Oh, it's, it's the same kind of thing as I understand it, but different.
I love those answers.
I love giving them, no I don't. On this side of the building, the one that we're actually facing right now, which is the actual east side of the building, the fascia was actually pulling away from the building, we had to call a contractor in to actually come in and tack it back into the wall. And not only on that side, but on the backside, the side that faces Killian Court. What we're finding out now that's happening is along the bottom edge of the building, where the, it's that brick face, it's really not even...
It's the veneer.
It's the veneer, thank you. It's actually falling off of the styrofoam that was affixed to the side of the building.
And it was stripped it down.
Yeah, and it's all falling off, like the glue or whatever mastic was behind it is all peeled off, and it's now falling off. So, we literally have little piles of these brick face plates all around the bottom side of the building, so we started talking to Paul a little bit, we started reaching out and getting some numbers. That, including the painting, was gonna be a gigantic number, and that's, I think, why we budgeted the eighty thousand originally. And we talked to Paul, we figured maybe it's a little bit more responsible to maybe hold off on the painting piece right now. Phil's doing a great job covering what we need to have covered at this point in time to keep it cosmetically and aesthetically looking professional inside the building. But the outside is still gonna be a challenge, and I think what we're trying to do is still get our arms around exactly what the, what the extent of that repair is going to be, whether it's something we do just to kind of cover up and fix the pieces that are gone, or whether we have to do a complete, I don't know, re-side of the entire building, which could be big money. I hate to say it, but I guess it's one of those, stay tuned, and we'll probably get back to you on that, once we get a more hard figure. Now, Paul's working with a couple of contractors right now, making that down.
Our biggest concern is that the veneer, even though it's only low, that the veneer higher doesn't start peeling off in, in the back, where people are parking or walking, or things of that sort. So, that's what we're looking at, and there are several options of how we wanna proceed, and we just gotta get all the quotes and all our information out there, so we can decide. And the problem that the chief was talking about, it was the red brick, or the, that was peeling off of the building itself, because it was never properly tacked to the building, this is a different issue, this is the veneer that they put in to make the two buildings look similar, and that's what's peeling off, is the veneer is peeling off, and if you walk by it, or you do, we did irrigation, and we had to come through, and we lost a section of them, because once we tried coming out of the building, they all just fell off on the ground, so those are the kind of deals that we're dealing with and looking at.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate the additional information.
Any other questions? Yes, Dan?
I'm gonna be upfront with you, it's not more of a question, but it's more like a complaint, the budget is usually, the budget is good, but I would be remiss, you don't, you don't come up here and run for office and be on the council, because you wanna, you wanna make some things happen, and it's gonna spill over into the fire department as well, it's the overtime number. And it comes back to the big question that Jody had first brought up, we're at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand here, and X over in the fire department when we get to there, but as, I look at the fire department and the police as a team, it's our two biggest departments, most of our overtime money is in those two departments, and when I combine, your number's just two-fifty, but we're getting close to seven-hundred, eight-hundred thousand dollars. So, I always ask that question, because there has to be a point in time for me to try and get my colleagues to say, that's too much, we need another guy. And then Eileen, to her credit, has tried to explain it to me, and it's contractual, and guys who are in unions, and then the guys who are in management, and there's no ever easy answer, and I don't expect an easy answer from the other department tonight as well. I just wanted to be on the record to say that that number, two-fifty, to me, is too high, and I wish I could do something about it, and I believe the answer is to, you don't have enough men. So, again, I know it can't be solved with this evening, but I wanted it to be stated that this is my problem with the budget. Other than that, I think you guys are doing a good job, I think, I thank Eileen for giving us a tight budget as well, because I think everything else that can be done has been done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions on this side? None. Okay, well, let's move on to police detail, which is a tab with no number, and after special revenue. And this is basically, my understanding is, this is paid by whoever hires them, it's not through tax rate.
It is, it really is, and...
Right, but it will, again, just, this is an example, however, correct me if I'm wrong, that it is in the budget, because we have to expend the money, but we get paid for it, so it's actually moot on the tax rate.
And that's what, that's what Tom and Paul are always talking about, when they talk about gross appropriating, you don't just, because it zeros itself out, you don't budget nothing, you have to budget the whole thing in expenditures, and then show it in the revenues at the same time, so it can be deceptive, that your budget, your budget may look like it increased significantly, but there may be another revenue element that offsets that entirely.
And that's why I wanted to highlight it, 'cause this is a classic example.
It is important.
What we do is when we put that figure together, Paul and I work very closely together when it comes time to trying to figure out with our magic ball what's gonna happen over the course of the upcoming year regarding construction work, contracting work, utility work, that kind of thing. And really, it is kind of a coin flip, because we're not really sure, it all depends, there are so many things that happen, because sometimes all the best-laid plans get put on the shelf because the economy takes a dive, or whatever. What we've done, though, is we've done a pretty good job of trying to figure out what our past history has been relative to the, the construction and the details and the utility work around town, and the number that we've come up with looks like it's gonna be pretty reflective of what we anticipate our expenditure out of that line being.
Anything you guys want to add? No? Any questions? Saying none, let's move on to code enforcement.
While they're changing over, just a suggestion, it sounds to me like the siding falling off is a water problem from splashback, it's down low, so we should also look from a landscape standpoint, some way of preventing that water from going back, 'cause I, I'm thinking that's probably what it is.
That's why we're getting a lot of different contractors to come in, we're not just going with one guy, we're trying to get a lot of different opinions.
It'd be good to get something that's more absorbing of the splash, as opposed to letting it bounce, sorry about that, didn't want to talk about budget timing.
That's all right.
Thank you again.
Code enforcement, shifting the colors again.
Good night, thank you.
Oh, are some people leaving? You don't wanna stay and support your fireman?
Do that.
Good evening, Chief Carria, good evening, gentlemen. I'll let you start, and you can do your little presentation on the code enforcement.
I do have a pile of paper, too, so...
Go right ahead, take whatever time you need to set yourself up. Code enforcement is oh-six, correct?
Okay, first, I'd like to introduce my staff, Assistant Chief Brian Borman, Assistant Chief Richard Pearson. Without these guys, I'd be lost, it's amazing the work that they do.
It's a good thing you appreciate that.
It's amazing, the work that they do, and the cooperation we have between our management team here. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, member of the Town Council, Town Manager Cabanel, Finance Director Paul McCauley. We spent a lot of time looking at the budget process here, as we have always, trying to get it, and how to determine our needs. I'm gonna start off first with the Building and Health Department and Code Enforcement. Ever since the Code Enforcement moved to the Fire Department, I continually, and still get on a daily basis, because I spend time up at the front office, talking to the customers that come in, and they thank me, and thank the council for moving them there, because the effectiveness, the efficiency, and the ease of being able to get permits and work in the town, they keep saying it's better than any town that they have to deal with. So, I take that very seriously, and I do thank those individuals, Fred Kelly, and for our billing official, for running a great organization and department there, they do a fantastic job out there. There's actually no increases in the Code Enforcement budget this year, last year's budget was three-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-seven dollars, this year it's three-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-sixty-eight dollars, which was actually a reduction in, of two-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. That's basically around workman's comp, some other benefits, and telephone expenses. So, that was pretty straightforward, if there's any questions on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Jody?
Hi.
Jody, Jody.
It's okay.
Jody.
Yeah, you wouldn't be the first, Nancy. Hi, Chief.
How you doing?
Good, page thirty-six, eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-eleven overtime, I'm gonna ask lots of questions about overtime tonight.
Okay.
What, explain to me what building inspections after hours are, and why they're necessary, please.
What happens on building inspections is a lot of times, there's, it's a scheduling issue, or for weekends, especially for some of our homeowners and residents in the community that have, are doing work on their own, and they need inspections of either electrical, or they're putting on a deck, and on that line, and they are not able to have that inspection done during the day, so we schedule those on weekend hours, or later after five. What we have implemented to try to minimize that is that when we're dealing with a deck or some type of a smaller structure, we put together a video inspection. What we're allowing homeowners to do is with a digital camera that has a dating system, they put their sonar tubes in for their footings, put the rulers in to show that they are the correct depth, the correct widths, and do all the video with the data, send it to us, and we do an inspection on video for residents only, we don't do that commercially, and that has been working tremendously. Also, with some of that administrative office overtime, is, is just keeping track of the records and documentation, and taking care of after-hour people that come to the window. The window closes at four, we have people that show up at four, so we end up being there till four-thirty, five, I don't wanna send anybody out, just to make sure we service our customers.
Thank you.
Eileen?
Is it also true that this includes things like Red Fest?
That's correct, under Code Enforcement, we have the health divisions under here also, so on weekends, we have food inspections for Red Fest, and that also comes under this. Thank you.
Yeah, good point. Any other questions, Code Enforcement? None. Oh, Tom?
Just wanna amplify your comments before about the ease of doing business with you. We had a, I had a significant home improvement project this year that turned into a structural home improvement, as well as a cosmetic home improvement, and the department was very helpful and very flexible in, in working with our contractor to get those things taken care of in a really quick fashion, saved me some money, thank you.
Very well, thank you.
Yeah, there's been a lot of positive comments ever since that has happened, consistently.
Well, you know, and one of the best things that I see is we're putting, I wanna say all our eggs in one basket, we're putting all our inspectors in one room, so when a, especially a commercial contractor comes in, they wanna do a larger project, they're able to actually come in on one visit, meet with the building inspector, our official, the health inspector, the fire marshal, and when they leave from that first meeting, they have almost everything they need to get prior to their final approval, so it works out very well.
And that was our hope, but there was a little trepidation.
Yeah.
But it has worked out really well, exactly.
Just if I can echo one thing, is we were one of the first ones in the state to do that. Hudson called intact to the chief, they're following that model and having the same results, and an assistant chief from Berlin, New Hampshire, reached out to me and said, how is that working? We're starting to go back and forth, they're in the early stages, 'cause they're having some of the same issues up there, and they're looking at our model.
So, you're trendsetter, is what you're saying?
We're ahead of the curve.
I did at that time, I went and did speak with the council for Hudson with reference to this on one evening, so we're very pleased for that.
Speaking of Dan Dwyer...
And the question to, to let people know, how many, it's a four-person department?
It's a three-person department, or four, three, three full-time and two-part-time.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Question, Bill?
Just a comment to dovetail off of Council Mahon. I had the opportunity to use the Inspektional Services. Being the prospective future parent of a adopted father, I have to foster child before I can adopt. And there are specific rules that are required in order for foster children to be, not just in my home, but in, in any other home for people that are seeking to, you know, foster children in the state. And I couldn't have been more thrilled with how everything was explained and the follow-up and them signing off and saying good luck. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a quick highlight on that, too. We're able to, because the fire and health and billing are all in one area, when we schedule foster inspections or daycare inspections, we can send everybody at the same time. So everything happens, everybody's there at the same time, so you don't have to make three separate...
So it's much more efficient.
More efficient. So...
Excellent. Okay. Okay, I guess we'll move on to the fire, number oh three. This will definitely be the, whoa. Eileen?
I just, I wanted to speak about this budget in particular.
We're talking the fire now?
About the fire department budget as it relates to overtime. We have done an enormous amount of research into what is the best way to staff the department. And the chief and his staff have been collecting very detailed data for the past several years. I feel very strongly about this overtime that I have proposed. It's very unusual for me to propose something like this. I understand why it might raise eyebrows. We looked at it from the point of view of hiring four new firefighters. As you know, that if you want to have an extra firefighter, you actually have to hire four because there are four shifts. So we looked at the cost of it. I believe for a year, it's around three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And what that would result in is, and you'll, you'll see it when you, when the chief gets into this, but, because he has some very compelling information to show you. But, but what, what would happen is if you hired another four firefighters, there would be days when you had nine, and there would be days when you would have eight. So you'd still have the same overtime because there, this new, these new four people would still have vacation days and holidays and sick time and personal days. So there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of change in the overtime, although it might be a small amount. I feel, again, I feel very strongly that for the safety of the community and for the staff, that a solid eight firefighters on staff at all times is what is needed at this point, and the overtime provides that. And at the most cost-effective manner and, and equalized fashion, meaning two people take the day off, there's only one guy that comes in, you still need overtime. Sometimes you have eight, sometimes you have nine. It's, it's, if, if you want to hire four, you need to provide the overtime to have a staff to nine. And there's an awful lot of, there's an awful lot of hours with twen, with thirty-two people that they have at their disposal to take off and that kind of thing for them to fill. So my point really is, there's, there's two, there's two categories of overtime. The first one, and pardon me for stealing your thunder, I'm just, I just want to make my point here. The overtime for the supervisors, that is, there are lieutenant...
Lieutenant captain.
And a captain on every shift, one in each location. So it's, it's critical to always have two at all times. So that's why that, that category is reflected, to always have two. The other one is for, to have the remaining six firefighters be on at all times. And the overtime comes in and fills those holidays and those vacation days and those sick days and all those kinds of things. And we've gone, again, to great length to hone it down, to look at actual numbers. But after all the, the review and enormous amounts of data that we've analyzed, there are circumstances when, when there's a risk there, that you may not have the proper staff to handle what needs to be handled. And it happens enough that it really isn't a case for mutual aid. Mutual aid is a situation where there's a big fire and everybody comes, or something unusual happens. Or you have four calls at the same time and somebody comes, because that doesn't happen very often. But it can't be because you aug, you're augmenting your, you don't have adequate staff. So I just want to give that as kind of a preamble, because I, I just feel very, very strongly about it, and I just feel that the town needs a solid eight. It's conservative, it's safe, and I really believe very strongly in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen.
Okay, have you heard? We've did extensive work with the town manager and the finance director reviewing the information and determining what the needs are for the budget for the fire department. Most of the line items are flat lines with very little increase, so I'm going to just kind of discuss the things that have a significant increase. And the first one is eighty-five oh two, which is building infrastructure upgrades and installations. The increase in this line item is directly attributed to the need for money to be put into Station Two. For the past ten years, there has been talk about replacing Station Two, so many, so money to maintain and repair the station has been deferred, waiting for this to happen. At this point in time, the need to address the building issues and safety concerns of the station is getting urgent. This would include, we've had problems with the sewer drains. We've had companies in there trying to get those repaired. We've had a problem with the electrical system. We have some leaky roof problems again. We have deterioration in the siding, deterioration in the cement floor in the bay areas. When the firefighters are doing maintenance on the apparatus, the water from the bay is now flowing under the walls, flowing into the kitchen area, and, no, that's just to name some of a few things that are going on at that station. This is not a fix-all, but we'll start to repair some of the major concerns to make the station safer for its occupants, along with the basis, basic maintenance of the building. Some of the items that we're talking about are, we looked at some rough costs, and these are just rough costs, was to repair the cement and metal work in the floors, about twenty-five thousand dollars. To upgrade and change and move some of the electrical work in there is about eight thousand. The plumbing upgrades is about four thousand, and sealing the floor and preparing the roof is about three thousand. So within that budget, we put about forty thousand in. If you look at that in a big picture here, holding off maintenance for that building for over ten years, that's about four thousand dollars a year, which maintaining a building is not that bad. So we have a lot of catching up to do, unless you guys want to buy, build a station next year, we can go for that. But that's...
You know, we want to.
We try. Okay? But, you know, without that, without that happening and moving forward that, I, we believe at this point in time, the maintenance of that station is, is really important. It's something we have to address.
Did you have a question about that item?
I did, but I'll wait if you let them finish that one.
It's fine, if it's this particular item, you can ask the question now.
Actually, I'm showing for our current budget, twenty-five thousand dollars. What did we do with that?
That's Station One maintenance.
Oh, okay.
We did a HVAC upgrade upstairs, and then some other, we're still in that budget year.
Right.
The HVAC.
Was a big part.
Yeah.
Okay, and you have a total of sixty-five? Never mind. Okay. I project it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Chief.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to the other items is eighty-one oh five and eighty-one eleven, which is supervisor overtime and firefighter EMT paramedic overtime. First, we're going to talk about the supervisory overtime and that need. We've spent time reviewing the safety and supervision of the personnel at emergency scenes, training evaluations, and at the stations. Our discussion for fire officer overtime or supervisors identified an increased need to ensure that we have two officers on duty at all times. That's one captain at Station One, Central Station, and one lieutenant at Station Two, being South Merrimack. Supervision is needed in the event we have multiple calls. You can't split up a supervisor and we have two things going on at the same time. Mutual aid, when requested to go out of town, we need to ensure that we send a fire officer out of town to manage our people, make sure they're safe. And while that fire officer is out of town, I need that lieutenant or that other captain remaining in town to ensure that he has the experience to take care of the remaining emergencies that happen in Merrimack. In recent years, we've lost a significant portion of our institutional knowledge and experience, so many of our junior firefighters that we've hired in the past, their fireground experience is very minimal. They don't have that experience where you can tell somebody just to go do something, they have to be supervised in doing it. That'll come with experience and time, but we have to build that time back up. We have reviewed the budget extensively with Paul, and we have been consistently over-expending our officer line item budget numbers year to year because we believe it's important to ensure that we have an officer on duty, so we keep kind of taking from the firefighter funds to do that. We feel that adequate supervision at every shift is very critical and provides experience and safety. As we, as we are going to discuss, this is, what I'm going to do now is discuss how we calculated the breakdown for the total supervisor overtime. We started out what we call earned time or shift coverage, and that includes vacation time, personal time, sick time, and we took all those numbers into account from all the personnel that we have on shift. After putting those numbers together and averaging over the five years or four-year period, we determined that we could use sixty-seven percent of the overtime or vacation that they're granted per year, which comes up to about twelve hundred and forty-one hours. We looked at their personal time, and the firefighter, fire officers use all their personal time that are granted to them, so we come up with five hundred and ninety-two hours on that. When it comes to sick time, looking at those, that, that average number, we are averaging about fifty percent of the sick time that, that they're using. This comes up to about six hundred and forty-eight hours. That totals to about two thousand, four hundred and eighty-two hours, or a sum of a hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars. Moving on to the next line item is training hours. For EMT recertification for officers, it's ninety-two hours. That comes up to four thousand, sixty-three dollars. We have holiday coverage in there, which is four hundred and eighty hours, which is about twenty-one hundred, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Twenty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. We have callback, which is about eight hundred hours, which is thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. We have fire investigation, education, and inspections, which is a hundred and ten hours, which is about four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So the proposed increase for the officer's budget to meet these, these minimum requirements that we've identified is about thirty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight, fifty-seven dollars, making the fif, sixteen, seventeen budget, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, twenty-eight dollars for the officers in overtime. In conclusion, we feel it is critical to have two supervisors on each shift at all times, eh, for the safety of the community and the staff.
Anybody have any questions up, up that particular before we move on? No? Okay, keep going.
Okay, further discussion going to be around the fire department for firefighters, EMT, and paramedic overtime. And how did we accomplish the need to provide a reasonable, consistent, and timely response while staffing the department for the types of calls and, that are taxing our resources? So the key here is to keep in mind that we are looking for a staffing of eight on each shift. That would include two fire officers, which we just discussed, and six firefighter, EMT paramedics to serve the community. At this point, we needed to figure out how to achieve this goal, to protect the community, and get the best bang for our buck. At first, we look at hiring four firefighter, EMT paramedics, placing one on each shift, providing twenty-four hour coverage protecting the community. This option would cost three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. That's fully loaded, those are Paul's terms. Okay, includes all the benefits, et cetera, et cetera. This would still not eliminate all overtime, but may reduce the overtime number that we're presenting here, about forty thousand dollars. We'll still need to fund for training, earned time, callback to provide, provide coverage to the community during multiple calls and special events such as the Fourth of July activities, open house for fire and police, supporting school activities, being Reed's very fun day, the Master Cola School and all the elementary schools, junior fire muster, the Merrimack High School DUI program, the Business Expo, and Merrimack Rocks. Those are all overtime-supported events. After further in-depth discussion, we have determined that the best bang for our dollar was to, would be to ensure that we try to maintain, again, two officers and six firefighters, EMTs on shift at each time. That's what we're calling that a strong aid. This is not a permanent fix. As the community continues to grow, emergency demands increase, the items will continually have to be reviewed and discussed, so as we move forward. I'm going to do the same thing I did with the officers, discuss how we calculated the breakdown and how this came about to come up with those overtime numbers for the EMT, firefighter, and paramedics. Same type of numbers. We looked at vacation, personal time, sick time. Under the firefighters union, they have professional development time. So after the average, the numbers are about the same. Sixty-seven percent of vacation comes up to two thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine hours. A hundred percent of their personal time, if they do use it, is about eleven hundred and fifty-two hours. Fifty percent of the sick time is sixteen hundred and eighty hours. They use a hundred percent of their professional development time, which is two hundred and forty hours, which totals five thousand, three hundred and seventy-one hours, at a cost of a hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars. Training hours for EMT paramedic recertification is eight hundred and forty-one hours, which is thirty thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars. Holiday coverage is fourteen hundred and forty hours, which is fifty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. Callback, which is averaged at twenty-three hundred hours, at eight, eighty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Fair labors and standard acts under FSLA for overtime adjustment is twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. So firefighter overtime, our proposed increase over last year's budget is sixty, sixty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars, which is a budget of three hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Questions? I have a question. You have EMT advanced recertification, but you don't have anything down there. I was just wondering why it's zero. EMT, advanced recertification?
What page you on?
I'm sorry. What you just did?
She's on here.
Eighty-one eleven, what you just, sorry. I was wondering if that blank, do you not do it, or is it covered somewhere else?
That was when we had a, the EM, the volunteer EMS section, and we were providing programs and, and classes for them. We don't have that anymore.
Oh, okay.
The, the volunteers are all basics.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it's in the line above. It's combined with the line above.
Ah, okay. Okay. And the, and the... Did I miss something?
No, we have a question.
Okay. And the same, eighty-one eleven, training new staff, you also don't have anything there that is similar?
I, I think when we had looked at hiring four guys, we stuck that in there, because if there was some type of, we put four guys on, that's a huge increase, and would we need to adjust for that or some training stuff that's outside of our normal training program?
Would that be a one-time training program to bring these guys on, to bring them up to speed, because we'd have to bring them in on during the day for one or two weeks and, and ensure we're still providing, you know what I mean, overtime to ensure that we're covering those times that we're bringing them in?
Okay, so that would be if it were a new position?
That's correct.
Okay.
So it's, we did not put that on there, so...
Okay.
Was that included in the cost that you gave us for the fully loaded?
That would not have been, because it would have been a one-time thing.
But it's still a cost.
Still a cost, correct.
But wouldn't be part of the salary raise, that kind of stuff?
No, no, no.
Those three seventy-two are just for four guys.
Four guys.
Their basic, bringing them on, what they get paid.
What was that total again?
Three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for four.
Yes, Alan?
This is, I realize that, as I said, I realize that this is a lot of money, and it's something that you have to look at very carefully. We have provided for you here a, an analysis of how the calls are, how the calls are actually taking place over a certain number of years. It's very important for you, the, the deepest analysis that we did relates to medical calls, because they are now in the area of sixty-three or four, sixty-four percent of all calls. If you don't mind, I'll do this one. What this shows is, and it's probably, it's easier for me to do it because I'm, I'm the lay, I'm the layman, so I can use terms that I understand, and maybe you'll understand as well. The medical calls are two different kinds of medical calls. One is a basic life support call, and the other one is an advanced life support call. So, as you can see, over these years, from two thousand and nine, nine on to two thousand and fifteen, the first block you'll see relates to the basic li- life support calls. And you can see that they move up and down a little bit, for the, but for the most part, they're fairly even. But where we're seeing an increase is in the advanced life support calls. That relates to issue relating to the paramedics. It also relates to the labor that's required to attend to a call like that. So, a basic life support call starts with two firefighters. An advanced life support call is five. So, as you can see, as the, the basic life support numbers are, are kind of generally around the same, the advanced life support calls are increasing. So, our calls in general for medical are increasing, although not exorbitantly. But the breakdown of what kind of calls matters because of the more, the more people that need to attend to those calls.
Oh, we've actually increased our number of people attending as opposed to more, no, this is an increase of calls, so why that massive jump?
What, what I'm saying is that there are more calls now.
Why? I mean, this is substantial, that's why I'm just having a hard time getting my arms around.
Because we're getting older.
Population's older. We're the third oldest state in the country.
We don't, we don't know why the calls are increasing, they just are, the phone rings and, and we go.
I mean, is it something we've changed? We're now taking more calls as opposed to other ambulance companies and all?
Nope, nope.
It's just we're getting older, right?
I think it's a, it's a, the population's getting older.
Baby boomers.
And then also, the standard of care over the last five years, seven years, has increased. We get new state protocols out every two years, and the level of care increases, and that actually is beneficial to all the patients.
Right, and, and the healthcare system has had a, a change as well. There are people coming home that didn't used to come home, so that those cause complications, all those things increase.
The standard of care is important because the, the, the level of care or the service that we're providing, the people that we're interacting with, and you can see there's an increase there.
The acuity is high.
You know, steady over everything but the ALS. They're getting better care than they did when we started in two thousand and nine. Not that we were doing things wrong, but as every two years, those state protocols come out, the entire state looks at information, how can we intervene faster, how can we do better? And as those ALS skills have come up across the state, the requirements on us, under our protocols by state law, or the people out there doing the job, you have to act at that level if you're trained there. So, that's a, a significant portion.
Sure. I, I, for me, it was peculiar because basic life support, as was pointed out, didn't change hardly at all. Advanced life support, that's so, I, I don't, it's like in the early days, they just didn't call, 'cause I knew this is gonna be beneficial, I don't know. It just is a substantial change.
But the acuity level, I think a lot of it does have to do with people coming home. I mean, you, you would have a hospital stay, but you can't stay in the hospital as much, so you're going home. That increases your risk of complication. Well, when they're being sent home, and they start having complications, they're the ones that are being called. They would have been in the hospital prior to this.
I think the aging population and the, and the actual level of care is important. What, what CMC in particular can do, with trans, with the equipment that we've gotten over the last few years, that fits into these protocols, being able to transmit, uh, excuse me, transmit that twelve lead to the hospital, we're transporting patients, and they're having balloon times, door-to-balloon times in less than an hour. So, I think that's driving that number.
Balloon means nothing.
Oh, no, I get it.
I'm sorry.
I don't.
We gotta picture it.
I'm sorry. The, uh, catheterization in the heart, that their time that they goes, from the time we hit them at the door, to the time they have inflation in the cath lab, most of the time is less than an hour. That's directly attributed to our level of care, being able to get them there faster and with better providing.
No, and that's all perfect, and, and the accolades that we've seen on a...
You're wondering about the frequency.
It's just, right. To me, that, that care would have already been having. I think the better answer, which I got my arms around in a better way, was that they're sending them home earlier and they may have to go back. That makes more sense to me than, the services absolutely are spectacular, but I, I just didn't see why the numbers would grow, but I...
Plus, we're getting older.
And I...
Types of patients we're seeing.
Yep.
Some are not in as good of shape, some are...
Geriatric, bariatric, uh, overdoses, things like that.
Yeah, that's part of the equation too, that whole overdose.
Thank you, sorry to have yanked the conversation out of track.
But that's appropriate.
That's more of, it's just context.
You do need it, yeah.
I have a direct hotline going to them pretty soon, right?
I think...
As we get older.
Go right ahead, you wanna finish?
Does anybody have any questions about this, this particular slide? I think it's very telling.
It certainly is.
Uh, so, can we go to the next one? Is that me? So, Council Boyd was asking the question as to what kind of calls that, that, the department over the years has attended to. So, we combined all the calls together, we combined both the, the basic life support and the, and the advanced life support into one total, which is total medical calls. And then concentrated on fire calls, hazardous material, motor vehicle accidents, which can also be a medical call as well, or a fire call. Mutual aid given, natural disasters, rescues, and service calls. So, you can see that the calls have gone up, and everything is sort of, you know, anything of significance is kind of staying around the same, so you look at the fire calls, and doesn't seem to be a lot of, you know, of, of any trend, big trending up, or really for hazardous materials, mutual aid, that's, that's gonna vary year, from year to year. Sometimes you receive more, sometimes you give more. And rescue and service calls, they're not really changing that much. It's the medical calls that are changing. And, again, not in an alarming, at an alarming rate, but as I said, it's the breakdown in the level of care that is needed and the concentration of the number of staff people that need to attend to that, to one type of call versus another.
What was the natural disaster number in two fourteen?
The Thanksgiving snowstorm.
Ah, okay. I was thinking flood, but that was a lot...
Most of that increases in that.
One year blown away in, in three days.
Yes. Wow. It's amazing how you put that in your memory, and you go, oh, yeah.
No, never forget it.
No, oh, you guys wouldn't.
Wish we could.
Amazing. And service calls, can you, is it a little like false alarms, those kind of things? Or what are they?
No. Some, these numbers are driven by, there's the National Fire Incident Reporting System, which is a national database that FEMA runs, and that they, they specify what calls are. So, a fire-type call, that's not, obviously, it's not five hundred building fires, or we'd have shells everywhere. But anything that's considered a fire-type of call, brush fire, fire in the building with no structure, like a burnt-up washer dryer, anything that's a fire-related call, hazardous material, could be an oil spill, could be a CO call, could be those kinds of things. An unknown smell that, that's where it fits into. Motor vehicle accidents, that's, or motor vehicle incidents. Mutual aid given, those are the number of times that we're sending a, a piece of apparatus to someone else 'cause they need help. Natural disaster, I think, is self-explanatory. Rescues are calls that aren't the medical calls and not a motor vehicle accident, they fit in somewhere else.
Industrial rescue.
Industrial rescue. So, we've had people who have tractors roll over, and they get law, lawn mowers or small, like John Deere tractors, they're trapped underneath.
We gotta lift it, it's technically a rescue.
So, we have to actually lift it. If you try to move it the wrong direction, you cause more damage than, so you have to lift it up pretty symmetrically.
A kid gets a harm caught to something they shouldn't have, they're not really hurt, but we've extricated him, that's a rescue.
Somebody's little child through a banister.
This is all national, it fits into their box.
Gotcha.
So, that's kinda, service calls is everything that doesn't fit into those.
All the rest.
Someone calls a water problem, you know, I, I came home and the apartment above me, water's coming through my ceiling, it's a water problem, that's a service call. We go, see if we can get in, stop the water, see if we can help them, those, those kinds of things, I, I think. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but, uh, false alarms, you know, when you're responding, would that be under fire calls?
Yeah, that's under fire calls.
Okay. I'm surprised the fire calls haven't gone up more than that, I mean, we have a lot more places.
Yeah, but that we have better fire prevention, we have a fire marshal, we have better inspections now, that we're funding more inspections there. In and out, where we go in and out of the MPO multiple times a year, just before Black Friday.
Right.
Assistant Chief Boardman takes an entourage, and they go through every store, make sure the exits are open, then they're storing stuff in the wrong spot, just to prevent...
Gotcha.
A little thing turning into a big thing. So, it's all that prevention stuff that we do, that eliminate that fire call line item, or that call.
How do you document that? That's an interesting point. I mean, you do a lot of preventative things, where does that show up? It's just part of your jobs.
It's hard to articulate, what, what did we prevent? There's a, there's a systems approach, and it's been ongoing for a long time. In the fire service we're talking about, we're, in some ways, we're in the business of putting ourselves out of business. 'Cause if we never responded to another building fire...
Yeah.
If, if we, if we never responded to another building fire again, that would be a good thing.
You'd be doing a good job.
However, you can't always eliminate everything. So, you gotta be ready for those, but it's, it's hard to actually quantify, 'cause fire prevention stuff has been going on for years, how much have we prevented? One interesting fact, though, is even though the number of structure fires across the country is decreasing, the intensity and the danger is actually increasing, because we call it the IKEA world.
The materials.
The stuff that burns, basically what you're putting in your house today compared to what it was forty years ago, is basically gasoline. This, it's, I, I, it's no, it's, it's a hydrocarbon-based product, overstuffed furniture, and it's all inhibited with fire-preventing materials. However, when it ignites, when it does ignite, and it will, from whatever cause, if we haven't done fully our preventive, can't take the human nature thing out of everything. When it does ignite, it burns hotter and faster, and I, I don't wanna get into all the technical jargon, but the heat release on a pound of hydrocarbon fuel, that if you looked at it at a curve, it shoots right up. Traditional stuff, wood, paper, leather, any natural or cellulose material, it's almost steady. So, the heat release is less. So, they're actually, we're, the, the fire service is doing a lot of stuff on research and with UL, flashovers, fires are hotter, quicker, and more dangerous than they ever were for us responding to them.
Well, what they're saying too is that back when we had different fuels, a fire would double in size every sixty seconds. Now, they're saying a fire will double in size every thirty to sixty seconds. So, if it's this big in thirty seconds, it's twice that, thirty more seconds, it's twice that.
So, the number of calls really doesn't reflect the intensity of them.
Correct.
The, and it's something the fire service, and it would, really, in the, it's only in the last five or six years that we started, this is nationally now, UL, underwriters, laboratories, and unfortunately, it all came out of some firefighters getting killed in New York City. But some goods coming out of it. They said, this is happening at a rate way different than we ever fought fires at. This is, something's changing, so they've reached out, and there's a lot of stuff going on in that, but basically, the fires are getting to flashover way faster than they ever used to. I know that's a technical term, way faster, but, and it, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to quantify all that, there's a lot of neat research going on, and it's, we're starting to adjust how we attack fires, because...
It affects training.
Well, we're crawling into a barrel of a loaded gun. Basically, you know, so the way we're looking at fires, and the way we're attacking them is different. Like, tell you the twenty years, in the last ten years, it's really eye-opening when you read some of the stuff that's happening across the country. Things that usually, I guess, you got away with, it's now higher stakes. Less of them, that's great, but the stakes are higher.
So, you need a higher skill set as a firefighter?
Yes.
Than you used to.
Right.
I'm sorry, I digressed.
No, no, I, that's part of that whole, how things are changing and what's involved. Okay. Questions really, oh, sorry, Eileen.
Did you, did you finish? Were you gonna say something else to kind of sum that up, or, Brian, did you have something you wanted to talk about?
Well, some of the things that we had kind of, going back to the institutional knowledge thing, that kind of fits into that, just, we've been, I don't wanna say we hired some great people, but the experience doesn't happen as fast, it's more intense now, but it doesn't happen as frequently. So, that's a bad thing, it's a good thing, less fires, it's a bad thing. So, I, I just looked at the, since two thousand, in two thousand and fourteen, we lost a combination of a hundred and sixty-six years of experience to retirement. Two firefighters with twenty-seven years each, one firefighter with thirty-one years, that's a total of eighty-five, that's firefighters. We've lost a lieutenant to retirement, twenty-seven years, a captain, twenty-five years, and another captain for twenty-seven years. So, three of our officers left that took seventy-nine years. So, that total institutional knowledge, it's alm, it's almost impossible to get back, and you're always trying to play catch-up, and that fits into the piece of the two supervisors. It's becoming, these fires are way more intense, the calls, the complexity and the overlapping and calls like that, to have that supervision, because I, we always say, the twenty years experience I have is not gonna be like the twenty years experience that the person coming in is, 'cause of that fire prevention piece and some of those things, things have changed. So, it takes a long time to, to make up. And I think, I think looking at it, we really need, i- it's, I, I know there's a, the discussion there, do we hire four and drop personnel, or do the overtime to hire eight? I'll tell you right now, to meet the overtime number that we're operating in, we're dropping to seven firefighters some of the days, part of the day, and trying to cover that with a part-time EMS person to make up that eight. So, that's seven firefighters, not eight, and an EMS person during the day, that EMS person's riding on the ambulance, where a lot of our calls are, and that's, that's a good thing. But if something happens at that fire, or those calls that we can't plan for all the time, we're only putting seven firefighters... we're only putting seven firefighters on it, that EMS person has no fire certifications, no, the other things, the rescues and those kinds of things, so that, that dropping to seven is really, we've looked at it and, um, it's kind of rolling the dice. And we've been rolling the dice for a while. So when we looked at this, we said, what do we need to do here? Because we've always been trying to hit a moving target. We really need to get to eight firefighters. We're not talking about the daytime EMS attendant, that's great, it's where calls are. It's, uh, great to have that person, but we need to get to that eight so that we understand what we're going for. You know, it's, it's hard on the officers to drop a guy out because now it's inconsistent. And it's, it's really difficult and it's becoming, we've rolled the dice a lot. And it's not the call, we can, we've obviously handled the calls, we have. I can't articulate to you when the next call was, will, will be, but it could be. And a lot of times, we may not have a lot of people in the station, if at all. I mean, we have guys coming back, but that time to get back and that stuff. So I think that's, we're dropping to seven right now. And that's where that overtime piece for the firefighters specifically is, to get that to eight. And let's kind of set the floor and so we know what we're talking about and what we're looking at.
And highlighting what Tom Manager said, in the future, if we need to move and go to nine, then that needs to be our next ceiling. You can't hire nine and then, then every time somebody takes a vacation, drop another one. Decide if we're gonna go to nine, then we decide to go to nine. If not, and if all we need is eight, then we need a staffed eight.
And that's when you have to pull your data together.
That's right.
Well, and I think.
You have to make that move for that overtime number. And the hiring number now starts to get closer and closer together because of the number of the calls.
But in the meantime, this overtime number helps you achieve the minimum that you're thinking.
Strong eight that we're trying to maintain.
And I think, um, going, going along, and I think Jody, you probably, you'd said with the police, you were gonna ask it, but, um, a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, we just can't anticipate when our high volume, volume is. If, and you know, you look at our scatter chart, calls are all over the place.
I was just gonna say that, I think that's, has to be noted, because I've seen your scatter chart. And there really is no trending to one time, it's all over the place. There's no pattern to it whatsoever, twenty-four hour truly scattered. And, and so it's really not something that you can therefore schedule for, because there is no pattern.
She's got the big ones, I got the whole year.
There you go.
She's showing everyone.
So.
Okay. This is the extent of the information that we've been gathering. So this is, this is one month, um, and.
Yeah, there's no pattern there.
This, this particular month is, uh, July of two thousand and fifteen. And these are the hours of the day in, um, in military time. So, um, so this is, what, what times, where, where is the dead of the night here?
Right to your fingers, one in the morning.
Down two?
Yeah, two in the morning, then twelve is new time.
Like zero six hundred would be.
Zero, from here to here, all the way across, these are the number, these are the days. You can see all these boxes here, those are all calls. And down here, these are, um, from twelve.
Midnight.
Midnight till six AM. And then down here.
From seven at night to midnight.
Seven to midnight, you can see all the calls that have come during those, those periods of time. Um, we show different colors. I know that people at home can't see these, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands the extent to which we've analyzed this. Um, these are the actual calls. Um, it's written in here, whether it's an ALS or BLS. It's written in here if, um, so for instance, yellow means that there were two calls at the same time. This means, the orange means there were three calls at the same time.
At that same hour.
Um, you can see the back-to-back calls that are, are coming here, um, all these di, these different hours. Um, doesn't say how long the call took, could, could involve actually transporting a patient to Nashua or Manchester or something like that. But my point really is, um, that there consistently are a lot of yellows and a lot of oranges, not a lot of oranges, but not blue, not green colors. Consistently throughout the, the month, but not in a, necessarily in a pattern, but is why you need the eight. So just, just the heck of it, I just, these are honestly just random months that we've selected.
Similar pattern.
Here's another month, um, again, with the yellow, um, with the back-to-back, with the orange. And it's just, it's, it's another month with, and, and what we see also within these green boxes, you don't see which ones are ALS and which ones are BL, BLS, which require more staff, but you saw it on, on your charts, I, I don't.
Can we put to rest that they sleep all night?
Yes. No, but I mean, look, look.
No, I mean, honestly, when you see it.
No, but seriously, look. Okay, those have been called.
The chief was joking before when I said, hey, you, Tom and I, they gotta come, engine two, most of the time comes by our house because they use an adequate road to connect to the center of town or the.
To rear witness.
Just a couple more months.
Because they're not sleeping, neither am I.
Again. Couple more months.
They don't have to worry the sirens all the time.
Yeah.
Dan?
A quick comment, I, I'm, I don't know what you're hearing, but this is what I've been hearing. So I want to clarify it for you guys as well. I've never personally suggested that we go below eight. I've never personally suggested that we go nine or ten. Uh, eight seems to be the number that per men per shift. So over the last several minutes, I'm just getting, I'm hearing words and a feeling that, you know, that we're, we want to make sure we have eight, or we, we're not, we don't have eight, we want to get to eight. I just, I'm getting a vibe about the number eight, I just want to let everybody know, at least where I'm standing, I never supported, I don't like the budget because of the overtime number, but that's besides the point. Uh, if eight's the number per shift and that, no one from me or anybody else I've ever heard of suggested anything, anything different. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't think we ever got, I've got, ever got involved in numbers.
Well, no, by contract, we don't refill the first out, if I understand it correctly. So if somebody takes a vacation day, we don't fill that slot, so they're down to seven, is that correct?
That's not by contract, that's.
That's by budget driven.
Going back to when we had nine on a shift and the, when the guys retired and there was, we decided not to fill those. We tried to stay at the eight, couldn't do it with the overtime number. So we had to start dropping and we tried to capture efficiencies.
Well, that, two thousand and ten, was that when you?
I think it was eleven.
Two thousand and eleven, I think.
No, no, that's not the way I understood it. The way I understand it is, we have scheduled five here, three down south. It had to be a contract, because otherwise there'd be a lot of complaining that we didn't have the positions filled, I would have thought. So we could take the liberty on our own without, without any ramifications to not refill a vacation position or somebody calls in sick.
There are no minimum staffings in either contracts, except for the concept of there needs to be two people stationed at station, at the. Central station at all times, that's in the contract, but no other numbers as far as minimums.
So if, if staffing at station one drops below two, you have to initiate call back to bring numbers back up to above two for the next call.
So if we wanted to, we could have, not necessarily advocated, but if we wanted to, we could have said, we won't refill, we, we won't backfill till we get down to five, is that accurate then?
And then you'd end up having to shut down either station two.
Comes under the management's right clause. No, and fair enough, I'm just surprised that that worked that way for so long. No, we've been, we've been, the, the chief's been struggling this since he came on board as chief. Okay, uh, one of the first things that this council and the town manager asked him to do was to get his manning situation under control and the number of vehicles that were being sent out on the road on a call. Um, and so, you know, this isn't, and this has been going on since what? When did you get appointed chief, twenty?
Two thousand and seven, I think.
Yeah, so, you know, this has been something that's been going on for, um, since two thousand and seven. So that's like eight years now, okay, going on nine. And it's been, and, and it's been a constant struggle, uh, if you will, or a constant, um, process that you've been using to try and, and provide the service, provide the protection, and to provide for the safety of your personnel, um, while trying to manage your budget. And so that's, that's one of the, that's one of the things that, that's been going on. And now we're starting to run up against the situation where we're in between. Okay? We don't, we have enough to cover a population that we had four years ago or five years ago, but as we go forward, we're gonna need more, but we don't need them right now.
Correct.
Immediately, okay? We're in that, we go through this about every ten or twelve years, we get into this in-between, what I call an in-between stage, where there's, we know we're gonna need it, the service calls start to ramp up, but when you look at the tax effort that it's gonna take to do that, it's a difficult decision to make. So, you know, and that, and we're at that stage again, we've been at that stage for the last, I, in my opinion, we've been there for, for the last two years. So, you know, and, and that's, and that's where, and now, and now we're gonna have five hundred more residential units potentially on the books over the next three years.
Never mind additional.
Right. So, you know, plus the additional commercial square footage. So, you know, that, that, that really starts to, whoa, wait a minute, you know?
Might tip the scale.
Yeah.
And possibly a pipeline.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, and it's like I said at the, at the retreat, you know, we're not a little dinky town anymore. Okay? We're not a little dinky town.
Well, I think part of the thing too is, and, and this is a compliment to everybody, we now have data.
Yeah.
To be able to look at, I mean, you have the sense, but a sense doesn't give you reliable, defendable information. And now we do, and it's very clear what's happening, backing up that, what you think is.
Right. You know, and, and, you know, having, going through, uh, a bunch of stuff where data was the thing that helped make an informed decision.
That's right.
And it helped the voters make an informed decision because we could show them.
That's right.
How many classrooms we needed to do something, how many students were taking certain courses, where the demand was, uh, when I did the school space needs stuff, okay? And, you know, now that I'm going through the, with the rail transit, it's the same game. And the same thing is here, you know, we've always been asking for data and information.
Jody?
Thank you, just a couple of, thank you very much for all of this. I, I'm trying to wrap my head around, um, scheduling twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year is not something that I am personally familiar with, and I'm trying to understand how that works. Um, and when you add to shifts and, and how all, so you're, I'm, I'm definitely on a big learning curve here for, for how that goes for your department and the police department. I wouldn't have thought before tonight that adding four firefighters to staffing would not have decreased overtime. You know, just, that's not something that I would have thought of. I think you've made, um, some of it, I may be coming and sitting with you, Eileen, and going over the numbers again, because Eileen does a great job of explaining that. But some of it I'm trying to understand, but I've, you've really given me a lot of information tonight that I'm, I'm starting to figure that out. I had a couple of questions about, so the number of medical calls, I think, has increased dramatically. And from two thousand and nine to two thousand and fifteen, do we have numbers? Has our staffing increased or changed at all since then?
It's decreased by four.
It's decreased by four.
Correct.
Okay, I think people need to understand that. The other thing that I've learned tonight that I now understand is, so the budget that we have now, this that we're operating under now, it does not, with that overtime that's in this budget that I wasn't part of, there isn't enough money in that overtime for you to be at eight all the time. But with the overtime that's proposed in this upcoming budget, that would allow that to happen. So that's accurate, okay? Because I wasn't understanding that at first either, but now I think I get that. And, and like Dan said, I, yeah, I think none of us has, um, said that we didn't want to have eight or nine, but I couldn't understand what the difference was between having nine, eight, or seven, but I'm getting a better handle on that. I'm also wondering, it's with the increased housing that you're talking about, and if, if that pipeline comes through Merrimack, you guys are gonna be busy. Um, and not, training for, for types of, um, things, emergencies, that I don't think Merrimack has seen a lot of, or the potential magnitude that we could. So I'm, I don't, I guess it is an in-between stage right now, but I'm almost thinking that, and, and I, I don't know that I'd have any support for this, but that we need the four firefighters now in this budget. That's, and I know, I know, but I'm, I'm thinking that might not be a bad, a bad place to go. If not this year, it's not very far off. So, um, I, because I think, like you said, I think we're teetering right on, right on the line of what's, what's, and again, Tom pointed out, we have to consider it's the safety of the people in town, but it's also the safety of our staff. When they're short-staffed and they're responding to things and they don't have enough people on the site, they're going to get hurt, and we're, as a body, a governing body, we owe a responsibility to the safety of our staff too. So, anyway, I'm.
Chief, will you just, do you mind giving your story?
Which one?
The one about what happened to you? What, what has happened to you and why you're, you know, creaking around over there?
Creaking around. Uh, at the last fire, I was working at the fire and because of traction and doing other things other than command, I slipped and tore a rotator cuff. I have three tears in the labrum, I have to go for surgery, I have that fixed.
And why was that?
Pardon?
Why was that?
I was.
Double why?
Why'd you fall? What were you doing besides a command, is what I meant to ask. I was moving hose, I was, uh, walking around the back of the building trying to.
Because you didn't have enough staff.
And, yeah, because of the amount of staff. I was doing stuff other than what command should be doing.
Right, right. No, and, and, and I, and I, I know, and I'm not saying that anyone here doesn't. I'm not, I'm not putting anyone down, I'm not saying anything like that, but that's a responsibility that we have. So I just, um, because you, you see it, when the budget comes out and the newspaper's put, oh, there's an increase, and everybody starts flipping out and typing on their keyboards and freaking out. I just, and, and we've got fantastic data here. And if we're not in need of four firefighter, new firefighters in addition to what we have now, we are very, very close. And I just hope that people understand that. And when, if, not this year, if the very near future, that the people in this town will support that in the budget, because heaven knows, you guys have been talking about it and pounding numbers and crunching numbers long enough that I don't think anyone, they shouldn't, if they paid any attention, would say that this governing body hasn't taken the taxpayer, uh, to heart and taken the increase seriously. Um, and these guys have been doing the work. So anyway, that's, um, I, I will be talking to you, Eileen, though, because I really want to understand it. Thanks very much for all the information tonight, I appreciate it.
Bill?
Thank you. I've got a couple of things. I hope my colleagues will indulge me. Chief, just to confirm what A.C. Bonneman just said. In two thousand and eleven, we had twenty-eight firefighters that ultimately got, excuse, twenty firefighters that got reduced down to twenty-four, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So in two thousand and eleven, the actual overtime that we spent was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This upcoming budget with the reduction of four, of, of having four less firefighters on duty, we're only increasing the overtime by an additional thirty or eight percent versus what we paid out five years ago. To me, and it's, to me, it's, it's not a lot, I mean, it's a, it's a number, it's an increase, but I don't see that as a significant increase, at least from where I sit. In some of the questions that you answered for me, one of the things that Paul wrote, I guess, and I don't know who crafted the language, it's written here that our future goal is to have three paramedics per shift.
Correct, that's fine.
Go right ahead, Chief.
No, go ahead.
Okay, have three paramedics to, per, per shift. And it's two shifts, correct? Okay.
Four shifts.
Four shifts.
And to explain what that, answer that question was that you indicated, when, right now, we have two paramedics on a shift. When a paramedic takes a vacation, we allow that paramedic to take vacation and we don't necessarily have to replace that individual with another paramedic. So we drop to one per shift. So, once we do that, we have to, the officer now, his responsibility increases tenfold. We get onto a call where it's an ALS call, and does he send the paramedic to the hospital? We get onto a call where it's an ALS call, and does he send the paramedic to the hospital? Now I have none in town, or do I talk to the paramedic? And we're making these decisions in seconds here. And is he good enough where I can put an advanced EMT with him to go and keep the medic in town? So they're making decisions very quick. Our goal is we get three medics on a shift and a medic takes a time off. We always have two because we run two ambulances.
How many vacancies do we have as for the full-time paramedic slot right now?
None. None.
None, so you're, you're, you're fully staffed with eight?
Right, and let me, so as, when I got promoted, one of the things I was looking at, we saw the trends. ALS is going up. How are we going to respond to that need and what we have now? And, um, working with Sharon and, uh, Eileen, um, looking at how are we going to increase the paramedics? Right, that, that's the highest skill level. And meet our goal. The other thing like, and some people say, well, hire all paramedics. Well, now we might have skilled degradation because their skills, the number of times they do those. So we believe three per shift. So if one was out, we could drop the two.
Well.
Last year in the budget, you all approved it, and we, we've started that now. We're taking one of our higher, um, let's say, one of our better employees that has the knack for medical training and sending them to paramedic school within what we're doing right now. So, our, right now, we're looking at trying to increase that overtime to get to twelve. That's kind of in, independent of the, the, the numbers on the shift.
But to allude to what Council Valencourt said and to what Council Mayon said, okay, we're the eighth largest municipality, and I'm being redundant and I apologize to my colleagues, but we're the eighth largest municipality, we're not a town. Okay, we have twenty-eight thousand people that live here with significant employers in this town. We have three proposed projects that eventually are going to put additional housing units in this particular, in the, in this particular community. Depending on the age of the people that occupy those particular housing units is going to drive the, the BLS and the ALS service calls, which are already, you know, this, you know, last year, sixty-five percent. We've seen an increase of twenty-one percent, and I, I'm sitting here listening, you know, and, and I did the arithmetic. I'm sitting here figuring out the arithmetic. We're increasing the number of BLS and ALS service calls in our community because the, you know, the demographic is getting older. And if we're going to, if, if our community continues to grow and we're pointing additional people into living units, it's only going to tax the fire department staff, and same with the police department. There's going to, and, and we don't know what the numbers are. We don't know, like when MPO, when the premium outlets were being built, we had no idea what kind of an impact is. But I think we have a, we kind of have a, a reasonable idea of, of at least an increase of maybe ten percent, fifteen percent on, over the next couple of years that these potential projects in town are going to have. So, from where I sit, to me, it's, it's not four firefighters, it's four paramedics. Because you might have one family that wants to send their, send their person down to St. Joe's. You have a cardiac incident, you know they're going to Catholic Medical Center. So, you want to make sure that you have the right people out there providing the, the right level of skill and support so that they stabilize and get that, get that individual to the hospital. To me, the, the increase, and correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but one of the things I've learned is the mission of the fire department has changed.
Yep.
It's no longer, you know, trying to save a building, you're now saving lives and, and, and suppressing fires. That's, that's the goal. And if you save the structure and the process, well, that's, that's, that's out of way. We're, you know, that's an added benefit. You know, we're a first responded community right now.
The key that you said here was the right people in the right positions. So, it's, sometimes if, if you look throughout the whole state, everybody's looking for paramedics. The object here is not to lose the good ones that we have, so we have to ensure that we keep the good ones. And if there's a lot of paramedics out there, one of the things, when, uh, I promoted Assistant Chief Bornham, that provided him to do was ensure that we had a process to hire the right people, okay? And that process was put in, it's very lengthy and it's very demanding. And, uh, hats off to Assistant Chief Bornham, is one of the processes that, there's other people, towns in the state saying, wow, we want that process, okay? They want to hire our people just because we're vetting the best people. So, by doing that, just because there's a paramedic firefighter out there, doesn't mean he's the right person for our town. So, that next step in that process through Assistant Chief Bornham again, was to develop an in-house training program because we know we have good people here. If we can take a good person and make him a paramedic, we have a great paramedic serving the community. I can find another great firefighter to come in, maybe not necessarily a great firefighter/paramedic, but a great firefighter, train him, then all of a sudden I have another great firefighter/paramedic employee. So, we're looking at all angles to hire that in or make them in-house.
So I guess the.
If we, if, if, if we were to hire four firefighters, new positions, our goal would be firefighter/paramedics. But I don't want to hire a paramedic just for the sake of a paramedic. I'd rather hire a firefighter, so it might be three and two, or, you know what I mean, ultimately. But the problem is, like us, everybody else is having the same issues and seeing the same things. Paramedics, over the last couple of years, when the state list comes out for firefighters, why, look, with firefighter two, they're certified, what our requirements are, the paramedic lists are dwindling because ALS is increasing everywhere. So, I know what you're saying, I think, and I hope this is answering the question. If we were to hire four, our goal, we would go full board to hire four firefighter/paramedics. They're coming harder and harder to find because of that skill set and the number of hours it takes to get through that.
So, and maintain.
No, it's not going to get any better.
Stop.
It's not going to get any better on this topic. It's like the dispatchers, it's like nobody wants that job either. And historically, that job and paramedics haven't paid well. And so people, at the beginning, they try it and, and then they, it's really a lot of work, a lot of intense, and then they quit, or they move on when, for another couple bucks an hour in another town. Um, and you guys, I'm sure, just all read it, New Hampshire came out, uh, three percent unemployment.
Yep.
Uh, that's bad news for, for police departments, fire departments, to, any profession looking for someone, uh, good. So I don't mean to be a bummer, just good luck to that comment, trying to find what you're looking for.
Highlight on that, you're talking about.
Is a tough one.
Did you talk about communications? I think Chief Doyle has done a great job of hiring some of the right people in communications. And what maybe the citizens of the community don't understand is those are first-line responders right there. Sure. When I'm signing on, on going to a building fire or a motor vehicle accident, the information that they're providing me is priceless. When I get on the scene and I'm giving them seven things to do at one time. Get me an ETA on a medevac, give me the hospital, activate the trauma team. Uh, give me a rescue and give me another ambulance from Bedford. That's all in one breath, and they do it. You know, so I want to give kudos off to Chief Doyle, his, his team is increasing.
Not everyone can do that. Maintaining time.
They're the ultimate first responders.
In the middle of a chaos.
So.
It is.
So, coming back to the, the additional four firefighter argument, four paramedic argument, with alluding to what was communicated regarding the difference between eight on a shift and planning for nine on a shift. What, what is the problem? Well, I shouldn't say, let me back, let me retract and rephrase. What are the, what are the challenges that the fire department would have to overcome if it had an additional four firefighter/paramedics coming on as of July first, two thousand sixteen, and still being able to maintain eight people per, per shift? Because in, in my eyes, an additional four people, if you're scheduling to eight, you've got four, four pieces of the puzzle to interchange as you may see fit, depending on how the day planned, you know, depending on how the day factors out with service calls, fires, you know, medical calls, that kind of thing. Just, what, what are the challenges about an additional, getting an additional four firefighter slash paramedics and still scheduling eight to a shift?
Go right ahead. The problem is that a person has to be assigned to a shift. So they're on a twenty-four hour shift. You can't move them around from one shift to another shift to another shift. So, depending on if somebody calls in sick, there's, there can, can't be a floater or four floaters. They have to be assigned to one shift. And when somebody is out, there might be two people out, they can, they can staff then to eight, um, and instead of nine, but, um, you know, as I was saying, there's no way to fill, fit those pieces into the puzzle when a person has a schedule and fits into a shift. So you can't just grab a guy and say, okay, you're going to work here because I need you here at that time, I need you here at that time. They will have a set schedule per contract.
Well, let me ask, and maybe it addresses yours too. Because I, I'm a little confused as to the, the, the amount of money. If you scheduled for nine, which is adding the four.
Which was, right.
But having eight as a minimum, you wouldn't have to replace if someone, one person was out.
Just one, correct.
It's when two were out, whether it be for vacation or whatever, where you'd have to get in the overtime.
Right.
Do I have that correctly?
No, no problem.
So, that's why it confuses me that the overtime wouldn't be that much different. Because in, if I'm understanding it correctly, if you scheduled nine but went down to eight, you could have that allotment of one absence.
Yep.
And would only go to overtime beyond that, so.
Um, but again, that, and I've had to spend an awful lot of time, I can't tell you how much patience, that's why the chief has lost some hair since I've been here. But I, you know, I mean, really, it's taken a lot of time, I've taken a lot of time, and they've been very patient with me. But basically, um, what happens is you hire four new firefighters, and they all have vacation, and they all have sick time, and they all have training time, and they have, so you've added another, another group of hours that where there could be seven.
Okay, bottom line is, bottom line is, let's ask the other professionals, if you had your rathers, maybe it's an unfair question.
Don't ask.
Perhaps it's an unfair question, but at this point in time, not knowing, knowing the future might change things. Are you more comfortable with just increasing the overtime to accommodate that? Or with four new fires, firefighters, paramedics? Yeah, okay, so that's the discriminating factor.
That's where the, that's where the problem is. You can put firefighters on, but if you don't increase that overtime to maintain the strong eight, I'll have to drop two and be down to seven again because I'm back here with a low overtime.
So really, right now, you're comfortable with the plan right now?
Across the board.
That's where you are right now?
Next year, when we do more data evaluations, or the year after.
And that's the bottom line.
We want to go nine, then we have to determine, do we need a strong eight with a floating nine? Or do we need a strong nine because we've had all this other industry coming?
I think you're hearing support from the council.
Yeah.
That we know that you need something.
Correct.
It's a matter of just doing the justice, yes, Paul?
Maybe this will clear a little bit up because we have had these discussions. We've started this process back in October, myself, two assistants.
September.
September, the two assistants chiefs, the chiefs, in two thousand and fifteen. But, uh, we've started this process and we've kicked.
So we've, they've already done this.
Different scenarios around saying, all right, if we hire four, what can we give up in overtime? If we go to the overtime of a strong eight, which, which is the recommendation, to go to a strong eight, what does that mean? What does this mean? What does that mean? And we've kicked a lot of these scenarios around, meeting after meeting after meeting, to look at this and what the town manager, the fire department, we all came up with the conclusion, we need a strong eight right now. Currently, we need a strong eight, and we need to get the overtime up to a strong eight. Because what's happening is they're dropping to seven.
Which is dangerous.
Which is, they're, like Assistant Chief Bornham said, they're rolling the dice sometimes. So with the strong eight, they believe, if I'm putting words in your mouth, tell me. They believe with the strong eight, there might be opportunities where we might be rolling the dice a little bit, but not as much as if we were dropping down to seven. And to have a captain or lieutenant trying to have a shift saying, okay, I got nine now, wait a second, I'm down to eight. What are we dropping out? What apparatus am I dropping out? Who's not going here? Who's not going there? It, it could become a, a supervisor nightmare with the overtime, what not having, with the leaves and everything else, with having eight instead of nine, and nine instead of eight.
Well-examined dilemma.
Right.
We've been doing that already, though. We've, we've been going through that just unfortunately shorthanded. So to continue juggling, trying to figure out, okay, I've only got, only have eight tonight as opposed to nine. Because I'm, it's, it is huge money, and, and so I'm sure you already have the answer, but have we contemplated the percentage of time, uh, uh, that, that it would kick down to where we'd be two guys off or two, two, two firefighters off at a time? As opposed to, you know, having nine, we kicks back to one, we don't fill the, the one position. How often, what percentage of time goes down to, you know, where you'd have another guy missing that you'd have to fill? I mean, have we done that multiple, that addition and multiplication on the overtime from that standpoint?
And what we did.
In, in, in my mind, we have gone through all the different scenarios. Uh, we don't have all the specific information for you right now, but when a person takes a day off, we can't know when that is. When someone calls in sick, we can't know when that is. So we can't really, um, know when there's going to be two people off on a shift and when there's going to be one person off, or there's going to be a full nine, or, or any of that kind of thing, or how often that happens. That's a whole thing with probabilities and all that kind of thing. But, um, in going through all the gathering of data and reviewing of data, it comes down to a very simple answer that makes it simple for them, and it makes it simple, consistently simple, to have solid, always eight.
Solid eight.
And so the guys know, the supervisors know, the management knows, that at all times there will be eight. There's no anxiety, there's no, any of that kind of thing. When you start talking about nine, there, when, when that time comes, it may be, you now, you need a solid nine, which means you have to always have nine.
So it's not a matter of letting it drop down one.
Should be dropping.
It may be and it may not be, but we're not there yet.
Right, got you.
It would be an enormous relief, and it would be an enormous, um, it would be enormous, an enormous improvement right now to have eight all the time.
Belle, I don't think you were done, and then Dan?
So, the last couple minutes, I'm sitting here listening that eight and an increase in overtime strengthens the fire department. But I go back to the data from two thousand and eleven when you had nine and thirty thousand dollars less in overtime. Were you less stronger back then as opposed to what's being proposed now?
What, what, what's your question?
Okay, well, my question, my question is, like, the very, the very beginning of my commentary, A.C., I had commented that there were, back in two thousand and eleven, you had twenty-eight firefighters and an overtime budget of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're now at twenty-four and looking at an increase of three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And I'm not going to get into the fluctuation throughout the years, but in my eyes, from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and sixteen, just looking at those specific years, that overtime budget increased by thirty thousand dollars. Mind you, there were, you know, it goes up and down that way. My question is, even though the service call numbers in two thousand and eleven were six percent less than what they were last year, were we stronger tactically in two thousand and eleven with nine per shift and a three hundred and fifty thousand overtime, overtime budget versus what is being proposed to the council?
It's kind of hard to quantify only because back then, we still had, we maintained that strong eight, okay? And then we had nine and dropped one. But the type of calls have changed.
Okay.
So, before we'd send less people to a call, the ALS calls have now increased, those type of calls are increased. So the utilization of those resources are now going to be used up quicker. So, am I telling you that eight is going to be the solid number? That's where we are right now with the budget, and then we're still looking at the numbers to try to determine if next year, or then the year after that, we need to make a presentation to make a strong nine because of where we're going to go.
And I think, uh, Councilman, um, if you look at it, we're firefighters, I'll take more bodies all the time.
And I know that, I know that.
But in, when we, you know, because of the, the financial times the town was facing at the time, we eliminated those positions through attrition, no one was laid off, no one, you know, and we handled that for a while. We captured efficiency, the chief did. We captured efficiency, the chief did an incredible job, trying to minimize, not minimize, that's not the right word, but assess the risk of the calls and cut back on what we're sending, so we're not putting the town at risk. All those efficiencies have been captured going forward, but we had to start dropping to seven, sometimes. And sometimes, that was working, but we're finding it increasingly harder and harder. And I think the chief put it well one day, and it all kinda resonated, I think, with all of us. We've been trying to hit a moving target for four years, five years. So, to get to that eight, I, I mean, yeah, if you, if you say how many you want total, we'll probably give you a number. I couldn't tell you what the cost was gonna be.
Well, I mean.
You know, I, I think realistically, and looking at it, then when, when we looked at this goal, well, how do we get back to that eight that we had? Do we hire firefighters and drop, or do we bring the overtime so we maintain that? And that's a philosophical argument that every community addresses. But how many is that? Do you go to ten and drop two? In my mind, I think from a common sense, if you need eight, nine, ten, whatever it is, you kinda need it all the time. It becomes a, a supervision issue of how much we're gonna hit it with. In the time we need more people, that's when the emergency callback comes back, that's when we call national ring, cuz that fire's happening now. We can't staff to like London Court burning, right? Cuz I, you, you, we can't afford that. But that's what the mutual aids for, that's what the callbacks for, those kinds of issues. So, a lot of towns go, say, a, a bigger place than us, a city, they may have four or five, what they, on a shift that they'll drop down to. But as a supervisor, when you look at that, as a, when I was a shift officer, coming in in the morning, do I have nine? Do I have eight? Who are they? What positions are they in? And then, you know, part of the day, cuz we've always had a daytime attendant. You know, that, that's, that, to, to handle the medical piece, I guess, so, I don't, I don't wanna get off on a tangent.
No, but.
It becomes a, a, a management issue from, in a, a, fire service operates in companies, engine companies all, so, that, that shift cohesiveness, that, so we know what we're getting.
I have the same concern that you do regarding adequately staffing personnel, so that we're able to address the, what, what I'm gonna call, you know, you know, first response issues, that, you know, sixty-five percent of our calls last year were first response issues. That to me is, is, is a concern, and I, from where I sit, I wanna make sure that if not this year, that we're thinking about adequately staffing for the, for the existing demographic that exists in our community, but also the potential demographic that is, it's, it's coming. If, it, it may not be twenty seventeen, it might be twenty eighteen, and if you bring on a couple of new firefighters who have no idea to get around Merrimack, and you're doing it when everything's all a build out, now all of a sudden, they're, they're calling, they're calling the chief saying, you know, I'm on West Chamberlain Road, where's East Chamberlain Road? Well, you know that the turnpike goes right down the middle, he has, gonna have to go around. And that's, that's not something, you know, it, it's, it, like you talk about the institutional e- experience, which I appreciate. It's knowing how to get from point, from, from central or from the south fire station to a specific location the quick, most efficient time possible, whether it be medical call, hazmat, or fire. You know, you need to make sure that that person knows how to get there. And I, to me, the window's open right now, and I don't, I don't wanna have the window shut, and then we're forced to reopen the window, because we didn't think about, we didn't think about this. I, I just, to me, in my eyes, the window of opportunity is, is if not now, next year. And that's what I've really been wrestling with in doing my budget preparations with this.
Yeah, and I think that's, and I, Bill, I think that's the issue that all of us have been, but I think it's been answered.
But I have one legitimate follow-up question, if I could.
Really?
I'm sorry? We were talking philosophical. We were, we were all, you know. Yes, budget philosophy, thank you. Page twenty, page twenty-five, under education and training. Where it says paramedic in-house educational program.
That's eight three five two. Paramedics a shift.
Okay, and that's the one that you. You referenced earlier.
What number was that again?
Page twenty-five, under education and training, it's under the bullet point firefighter certification.
Eight three fifty-two.
Page twenty-five.
Zero one zero three eight three five two, education.
So, that's, so that is, that is the cost to send one of, one of, one of our firefighters to paramedic school to learn everything from conception to embryonic birth. To certify and go out and deliver a baby or resuscitate, resuscitate somebody back to life and everything in between. Okay, okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
It's tuition, yeah.
It's tuition.
Tuition.
Jody, you had?
Sure, I.
No, go ahead.
Am I next?
Sure.
Okay.
Go for it, then we'll do, Jody. I had forgotten you were waiting.
Thank you, guys. I'm certainly not up here to offend anybody, but I'm gonna tell you what I, what I think. I, I, I didn't like this budget, uh, this department's budget from the beginning, Eileen has explained it to me. Basically, I'll cut to the chase, where we got twelve guys in white, as we call you, or brass, uh, and then twenty-four rank and file, for a total of thirty-six men that run the department, rough, roughly. That's how I look at, from what I'm looking at the numbers. Eight's the magic number, eight times four shifts is thirty-two, but twelve management and twenty-four guys is a total of thirty-six. That's why never, it never really works. If you've got twelve management, twenty-four guys, you have a total department of thirty-six men, firefighters, paramedics, management, you're, everybody, and you want eight guys per shift. The problem is, what we're all looking for, what no one has said it yet, it's the contractual obligations that prevent us from having a different schedule. We're so locked into a contractual obligation in a schedule, there's no leeway. There's hardly anything to really negotiate, when you, when you, there's nothing much to talk about, about manpower. If you want eight men, I want eight men, but it's times four, so there's your thirty-two guys a day, or thirty guys per shift, you know, but we only have thirty-six men. So, back to your training, sick leave, vacation, working for a company's comp, there's no wonder why eight's never fulfilled, there's, there's not enough men in the department. Which leads me back to why I hate an overtime budget that approaches a half a million dollars. So, when I asked a, a common sense question to the manager over a month ago, well, half a million dollars, that, that to me is unreasonable, it's an ugly number. As a business person, you would hire more people to get that number down. And her response is, well, even if we hired four, your overtime budget would still be three, uh, approximately three hundred thousand. And so, that's where a guy like me, you just, a lot of you give up, but just like, we hear matrix, matrix and calls and all this stuff, but for me, I don't think you have enough men, I don't know how you get to have eight every day the way you will. And even if we were to add it, which is what I'm, at, would Jody like, it's like, you wanna add it, but you're, we're told from our management team, it wouldn't matter, that we would still have three hundred thousand plus in overtime. I, I don't know what to do with it, I really don't, it's a, it's one of the most frustrating things, that you wanna try and have a good policy for the town, policy for your men, policy for everybody, and I, I don't know how we get there this year with it. So, out of anything else, just lack of frustration at this point for me, on why I can't, uh, support the budget and its current numbers. Thanks.
Jody?
Thank you, on page twenty-five, under public and private school fire prevention program. Junior, junior fire muster, you're gonna get it, junior fire muster? Is that zeroed out in this budget?
This is for fire prevention program, um, memorabilia, stuff we hand out there.
Okay.
Okay, we've determined there's enough money in the budget without adding that to still bring in.
But we're still gonna have the muster.
Yep, muster still.
Excellent, okay, that was, that was what I was worried about, thank you. And then, um, oh, that's a big deal every year, so, yeah. The school loves it, it's just, it's a great, it's a great opportunity.
Everybody gets out of the classroom.
For the firemen to interact with, with the kids in town. Emergency management, eighty-four zero six. I had a question, and I don't know, it might be a question for Paul and Eileen, the discrepancy between the department budgeted amount and the town manager amount, I was just wondering if we could have some more information on that, it's substantial.
Yep, the electronic message board and signage. When we started the budget process, similar to what we talked about with the police department and the solid waste department, we had a electronic message board going near the central station, fire station, and about thirty-five thousand dollars. As we went through the budget, we've taken that out, because there's other avenues, as, as was mentioned by the town manager, through some of the bridge projects and other things, to get these electronic message boards. And that's why it was taken out, and that's what the discrepancy was. And that was for emergency management, so they could pull up an electronic, mobile message board wherever they needed it.
You said that was around thirty-five?
Thirty-five, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's where the difference is.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody else, Tom?
Yeah, Chief, you're gonna have an opportunity. You're gonna have an opportunity to talk about those challenges when you get the peer review from Monahan, when he brings his project in.
Yes.
Okay, with a four-story hotel, hundred and twenty rooms, hundred and forty, hundred and forty residential units, and all of that commercial space, and a parking garage.
Another parking garage.
Okay, so, on twenty acres.
Yes.
But it's an.
Proposed.
Proposed, exactly, okay? So, if and when that comes about, it's your opportunity to say, hey, you know, cuz all he's talking about is about nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in estimated tax revenue from his engineer, okay? Of which we get twenty-two percent of that, a little over two hundred thousand dollars, to try and provide the, the inspections, and to prepare for events in that confined area. So, this is above the five hundred I talked about earlier.
Right.
Okay, that's potentially coming on board. So, again, you can sit there and you go, ah, nuts, I gotta do this. Look, it is an opportunity to convince people of, you know, what the issues are, and what the need is going to be.
Yep.
You know, so, and going back to way back, when you were talking about losing all that experience, makes it, takes it longer for your people to learn, your new people to learn. Cuz they learn sitting around a table at dinnertime. They get all the technical stuff when they go to school. The practical application is what they hear from guys that have experienced it, plus you're doubly cursed, because you don't have that many structure fires anymore.
One thing my Assistant Chief Pearson says, you don't know really what you're getting into, till you get chased out of a building by a fire.
Yeah.
A lot of our younger officers haven't had the.
Luxury?
The luxury of getting chased out of a building, and they're just not sure what it's like.
It scares you.
Yeah, there was a book out, there was a book out, about fifteen, sixteen years ago that I read, talked about a, the guy embedded himself with a fire department. And a guy went into a building, and it was, he pulled everybody out. And three minutes after he pulled everybody out, the whole floor collapsed. And so, he asked them afterwards, why did you pull it out? What made you take your men out of that building? He said, I went in there, I looked around, I wasn't seeing what I expected to see.
That's correct.
And I knew it was gonna be trouble, so I got them out. So, that's, you know.
Institutional knowledge.
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the piece that, that people miss when they think about, oh, good, they're gone. Okay, we get cheaper guys now to fill those halls, okay?
That's why we lose more hair.
And he gets rarer, and you know.
And that's true with any occupation like that.
You know, yeah, yeah.
A, a healthy balance of experienced, and young and new, and enthusiastic, and fresh out of school, or training, or whatever, a healthy balance is always the best thing for every profession. But sometimes you don't have the luxury of bad choice.
Yes, Tom?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna beat a dead horse one more time. I, I know we've been talking all evening now about seven, eight, nine, and things of that nature. Help me understand the difference in, in how you can be responsive without any additional equipment, if you have nine versus eight people. What ultimate difference does that make in how you respond to any, any call, or, or an average call?
It's being able to have the resources, the people, to handle the call, and handle the next call coming up, or handle a larger call with the same number of people.
Okay, so, from a first response perspective, you send out equipment and people to a fire, or a an ambulance call, medical call, or something like that. You, you have a certain number of people you send out for that, and you, you then call in backup, don't you, if you, if you don't have enough people to man for the second call, or something like that?
That's where we throw the dice, depending on what the call is. When we have, uh, and we, we change our operating procedure to cover this, when we have a box alarm, as we call it, that's an alarm at an industrial facility. We do our due diligence to identify how big the facility is, what they have for contents and material, and their fire load is, are they fully sprinkled, do they have, uh, smoke detectors and a full alarm system? If they have all that information, we reduce the call to two engines, instead of bringing back. But when we're responding there, we don't call callback in, because history has shown in that facility, through our documentation, that most of those calls have been false alarms. That's Assistant Chief Borman, that's the, the dice, we're throwing the dice. And we're hoping that when we get there, it's still gonna be one of those false alarms. And I say I send two engines, that's because I get the district engine going, and the second engine is going also, but he's kind of in service. If I get a motor vehicle accident at the same time, that engine's gonna peel off and go to that motor vehicle accident, then we're gonna call in somebody else to handle that next call. Okay, so that's that piece of management, that's that dice we're throwing, that's we're hoping that, that building that we're going to is not gonna have a fire. But we've done our due diligence also, because we also plan that it has a full sprinkler system, it has an alarm system, so if there's a fire when we get there, there's at least something helping that first engine, until we can call mutual aid to come in, and minimize that damage. So, when you start adding people, then you start adding those resources to handle those calls more efficiently, and handle those multiple calls more effectively.
But, just, I understand, just seven versus eight, does that make a difference in your ability to respond to that building?
Drastically.
How? Help me understand that, you're gonna send two engines, that's at least four people, right?
Two engines are six, you have to have.
There's six people.
Three people on an engine.
Okay.
Okay.
So, if you have eight people, that leaves two in the, in the main office?
Yep, well, let me re, let me walk back again, I know, Eileen keeps telling me, don't be technical.
Well, please.
I send three engines, I send two engines out, there's three guys on that engine. Out of those six guys on those two engines, one is a driver, so he doesn't do anything but drive that truck, and get watered where it needs to go. So, he now doesn't become part of that firefighting group. Then you have an officer who has to walk around the building and make decisions, and one firefighter going. So, there's really two firefighters going there, a driver, and then another truck going, okay, in the event of, with two firefighters and a driver. What that leaves me back at the station is an ambulance that's fully manned, staffed. If I don't have that eighth person, I only have one guy in the ambulance. I can't respond with that ambulance, because state law says I have to have two, I can't go anywhere with it. That's why the eight is a key number here, it gives me two engines and an ambulance staffed, that I can move the ambulance all the time.
Okay, and so going to nine, doesn't really incrementally make a big difference there, does it?
Not nine to respond, but as the town grows, you, you don't wanna go from eight to twelve, because the cost is huge. You wanna go from eight to nine to offset your calls, because you may have to send two ambulance calls at one time, okay? So, in that case, I may have to pull a guy off the back of the engine, run a two-man engine company, again, throwing the dice, hoping his next call's not gonna be bad, to run that second ambulance. So, I have those options to do that. And then when you get ten, now all of a sudden, you could staff another ambulance all the time.
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
It's just hard to see that the increment from seven to eight, or eight to nine, is gonna make that big a difference.
Multiplier, sixty-five percent of the calls are med calls, so, if it's a BLS call, two people go out, we don't need a callback, you still have your two engine companies available to respond. You have a second call, someone's gonna. To respond, you have a second call, someone's gotta handle that. And we handle that, you're still putting, potentially putting, it's 'cause you're minimizing that manpower available for fires.
Eileen?
As far as the difference between having somebody on staff and callback, there's a difference between how, there's a difference between time is of the, always of the essence. So, you, you institute a callback, how long does it take that person to get there? Two minutes have gone by, three minutes, four minutes. There's two guys at one station, it's a different station. You're over here, you, you've started, you know, addressing the, the issues of the fire. These guys have to come here, they gotta call, so, so it's a matter of, callback doesn't address the timeliness issue and what can happen in just a few minutes. Didn't answer your question at all.
No, because you're still getting a first response to the call. Now, granted, if you get two or three calls all within the same minute or two, you're over, you're overbooked and you gotta call in aid from somewhere else or something like that. But at, at some point, to reach, you, you just have to try and figure out, I mean, am I meeting the first response requirement or not, and does an extra person make any difference if I can't send out another piece of equipment? You know, or if I don't have another piece of equipment to send, you know, having an extra, having twelve people in the station wouldn't do any good if you didn't have enough engines to carry them, right? To, to four calls at once.
We have enough equipment, that's, you know, there's, there's four engines allowed, so depending on the call is what we take for the, to answer that call.
You, you're just addressing what he's saying?
Yes, I think I have your answer.
Oh, good.
I want you guys to correct me if my answer's wrong. There's nothing wrong with the eight figure, but I would, my guess is more than half the time, they don't have eight. Between sick leave, training, vacation, gone, they don't have eight. Most of the time, on three hundred and sixty-four days a year, eight's not around.
Which is the issue.
So that's why the nine figure helps, because then more often they'd have eight. But for, as of today, in the last four years, they rare, rarely have eight.
But we've been sitting here discussing this, and, and they've said, we wanna do a strong eight, which means we'll use overtime to make sure that
And that's why I disagree with them.
And then if we go to nine, we wanna make sure it's a strong nine, so we're always at nine. And I, I'm just wondering if, you know, a strong eight's a number and nine is, is a comfort level, or if, you know
It gives, depends on type of call, and it gives that officer that ability to move that one person around to man that second ambulance.
With a second call?
With a second call, or
So I take it I wasn't wrong?
No.
Not necessarily, except
This is for the rectory.
See, I gotta, I gotta feel, I just gotta trust you guys.
I, I just say, to medical calls, a lot of the calls, the biggest percentage of them, eight guys, we can handle that. I can't have enough people if I'm first to, to London Court burning. So we gotta balance, you know, the how much of that, so incrementally, I think with the, the fiscal constraints we had over the last year, few years, with the downturn and everything, you know, we've come to consensus about where we should be, but we've got back to a point, can we get that, that eight so we can start really, it's the same consistently?
It's interim.
I understand that in a disaster, you can't have enough people. And that's why we have mutual aid, that's why we're ready to respond to mutual aid at Bedford or to Nashua and stuff like that, to try and make up that situation. In any disaster, you'll never have enough people, but, you know, so
But you need to have the people to handle the normal calls within your community.
How do you plan for that first response requirement?
And then you, you do your diligence to determine where you need to be today. And right now, because of that moving number we've been trying to hit, we've set down that today, we need eight people to take care of it. Next, next week, not next week, next year, okay, or the year after, we need to figure out where we're gonna go in the next two, three, four, five years. And if five years says we need to be at ten, how do we get to that in five years based on how the town's growing, how our calls are growing, and when that has to happen? You can't go from eight to ten, you need to go from eight to nine, and nine will give you an ability to, i.e. run the second ambulance, hit some of those smaller calls, but still have enough people on shift to handle the better calls safer. And then a year or two down the road, when we plan that the community's gonna continue growing, or this MPO project goes and the houses go in up there, then we say we need ten on a shift to man, now we have to have two, two ambulances all the time, okay?
But that's in the future.
But that's in the future, but you have to start that process.
And just as an anecdote to this whole conversation, around the corner from my house on Jock Road, unfortunately, where, where the chief got injured, there was a fire on Bedford Road. There was a fire hydrant at the corner of Bedford Road and Bean Road. However, it was on the opposite side of Bean Road, which means the fire hose crossed Bean Road, which means the chief had to deploy and tie up an ambulance and put it on the other side of Bean Road on the off chance that he got a medical call on Bean Road, because with with the cover being out, he had to have something there deployed on the off chance that they get a call on Clara Drive or West Street or something like that. So, one ambulance was tied up for X number hours, and the other ambulance was responsible, and correct me if I'm wrong, for pretty much covering the, the entire town.
Well, I had that other ambulance there because we still couldn't cross it, so I had the first ambulance that would go down Bean Road, grab the patient, come back to the hose, swap it to the other ambulance, and continue it on.
Right, that's correct.
That's, that was the plan because I had to still protect that piece of town.
That's what makes you the boss.
Correct.
That's what makes me the boss, no air.
Can't we put some ramps around that hose to let them drive over or something? It seems like an awfully expensive solution to
How many ti, the issue, we look at how many times does that happen?
Well, I understand, but
You know what I mean?
Your rescue trucks and whatnot have all these things to jack things up, you'd figure they could put a couple of ramps that would be the height of a hose and allow you to drive
Most departments don't have the ramps. They're heavy and expensive, and they couldn't increase our workers' comp moving them around. They're pretty big to get a truck over on top of that.
Oh, there are such things.
That's the worst.
Okay, one of the things I wanted to bring out too, we do get reimbursed for ambulance services. So there's a certain amount of revenue that, I shouldn't say it's revenue, what is it, reimbursement?
It's revenue.
It's revenue, that really offsets the whole fire department thing. Any idea on, and, and that's paid by insurance companies and Medicare for ambulance services, right?
And patients, people who don't have insurance.
And patients themselves.
Yeah, we just increased it, we talked about that, we just increased it this year.
It has to do with what allowed by Medicare, right?
Right. It is, I'm just, I'm in my Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year.
So I think that's also what we have to remember, that there is an offsetting related to the budget in the fire department.
For those ambulance calls, ambulance revenue.
And we buy ambulances and do all that kind of stuff, too, with all of that funding, if you will, I think.
Right, but it's, but my point is, it's not, that does help with the tax rate in the end. I mean, what would happen if we didn't have it? We'd be paying seven hundred thousand dollars in the general fund as related to it. Okay, other questions, comments? Well, you're ready to go, aren't you?
I think we got a lot of information.
Yes, I do, and I think what you're, what you're saying, hopefully, or feeling is a reflection of support from the council.
Thank you very much.
And the data was really helpful, so thank you to Eileen and Paul and working with them to, and I know that it's, it's like trying to pull needles out of a haystack, I get it, but I certainly appreciate it.
I'm going to give Kathy Nato a lot of credit for putting all this data together and dealing with me to collect all this data.
And you still have to continue. Because as the future comes down and those effects, data changes, that's gonna be your justification.
She keeps saying, you want what now?
But I think probably catching up was the hardest part, now it's
That's correct, now we have the two thousand, to now, to today, and we've actually found the correct methodology to collect the data. There's a few things I still have to adjust, but I think right now we have the correct methodology and it's answering the questions.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Have a good weekend. Yes, as you know, Monday night, if you give me, Monday night we'll be going over the, the council deliberations of the budget. The library asked if they could just have five, ten minutes at the beginning to go over the questions that were asked and to discuss what their plans are with, with their staffing and, and their raised opportunity. All the departments will be here, so if a question does arise, departments will be here to answer those questions. In years, for Jody's sake, in years past, I have provided kind of a sheet. We've talked about some stuff that, you know, like the additional revenue for the, for the auto registrations and the fifty thousand dollars for the police, police department because of the retirement shifts. So you'll get us an Excel spreadsheet that night to start with. And if the council wants to accept those changes, that's fine, we'll keep a running total here of deliberations. And it's up, you know, and then what goes on is that if there's changes or things of that sort, they'll be factored in. What I'm requesting is if there's personnel changes that people are thinking, whether adding positions, deleting positions, if they're full-time, part-time, if they just give me a heads up so I can do the calculations, 'cause it isn't as quick as going to eighty-four oh one and taking out fifty thousand dollars. There's retirement, there's workers' comp, there's social security, there's a bunch of other things, and if it's a full-time position, there's other benefits that go along with it, such as health insurance, dental insurance, life insurance, things of that sort. So if you could just give me a heads up, be more than happy to have those numbers ready for you on Monday night also.
Or any others, actually, I mean
Any, yeah, whatever you need.
But there's any other calculations.
Right, whatever other calculations you, you're looking at or need, you know, just give me a call, send Eileen an email, she'll shoot it over to me and we'll get them for you on Monday.
Excellent. Okay, any other questions, anyone, any comments? Yes, Eileen?
All of the department heads will be here on the twenty-fifth, on Monday, so that they can answer any further questions that anyone has as, as you deliberate.
Very good.
Okay, one last thing. Sorry, as we know, February ninth is primary day here in Merrimack, New Hampshire and the state of New Hampshire. It is also the last day for collective bargaining agreements, petition warrant articles, and petition bonds. I know it's gonna be a very busy night for the council because the council has to go and certify the boxes before they go up to the Secretary of State in Concord. However, if we get a petition bond or we get a collective bargaining agreement that is late, not on the twenty-eighth, but after the twenty-eighth, and we need to ratify it, we might have to hold a special meeting at six o'clock to do those things. It's been posted, it will be posted as a special meeting. Petition warrant articles can usually wait until Thursday, the eleventh, to go over, but a petition bond has to be acted on that night by the council to get moved forward.
So you're gonna schedule one?
We're gonna schedule a meeting on the ninth, if we need it, it's there.
It'll be there.
But I just wanna, I know it's gonna be a busy night for the council because of
We will know that by when?
We won't know that until five o'clock on the ninth with, we'll know the collective bargaining, we won't know the petition bond until five o'clock that night.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay.
So the odds are we will be meeting.
We might, we might not, I don't, I, I haven't heard anything about petition bonds.
Only for petition bonds.
Only for a petition bond or
Yeah, I was gonna say, how often do we get a petition bond?
Usually, and if that's the case, somebody will call and ask the questions to get it, what kind of language? Yeah, and right now I haven't heard anything, but it's still almost three weeks away.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sorry.
No problem, okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Mayhem. I believe there's probably no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, it's a non-dilettable motion.
I believe that would be seven zero zero.
It's either up or down.